Okay, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Los Banos City Council. Could I please have George Allen from West Side Church come forward for the opening prayer?
I would like to express my thanks for the continuing support of the Christian churches in this community by continuing to invite prayer at these proceedings. Thank you. As we pray, think of this: We will be entering into the very throne room of God. Let us pray. Dear Father, on our own, we are not able to come up with answers for problems that continue to plague us in our country, in our state, and in our city. And so we recognize that without your help, we can do nothing. Please help us. We pray for our city and all its decisions to spend or to not spend, to apply wisdom to those things that we will be discussing tonight. We pray for our mayor, along with the city council members and those that are hired to serve our city with our trust in them to do the job we ask. We pray for our police and its departments. They carry a fiduciary responsibility to uphold justice, and all the while, they need to go home to their families safely. We pray for their safety. We pray for all those who would do business here to have the best construction on all projects and to be honest in all their dealings with our community. We pray for discovery. We pray for revelation. Show us those things that we might be missing so that we can serve with knowledge and foresight. Finally, as a community, help us all to pray for rain. Bring down your blessings on us, even though we are not worthy. In Jesus' name, we pray it. Amen.
Thank you, George. I'd like to call to order the September 16th meeting of the Los Banos City Council. Commander Haddon, would you... Oh, Chief Brizzy!
I don't know, Chief.
All right, Commander Haddon. You just popped in. Would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Director Mallory, roll call.
For Leah.
Here.
Louis.
Silvella.
Stone Group.
Walter.
Here. We have a quorum. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya.
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item five, presentation, proclamation recognizing Cancer Awareness Month. And could I have the fire department come forward, please? Everyone that's here?
You look too comfortable.
We don't have a final toll yet, but these gentlemen, along with the rest of the fire department, have put forth their time to volunteerism, to raise money again for cancer awareness this month, and we will have a final toll later on, probably. So if you guys, you three, would turn your backs on the crowd for a minute, and I'll turn mine. These are the shirts that we're selling. Last year, they were pink, and now they're a little bit more neutral, let's see, gender neutral for male and female. We still have the pink. Okay, thank you. It kind of got me out of wearing the tie tonight, so I kind of like it. Proclamation recognizing Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, in 2015, about 1,658,370 new cancer cases are expected to be diagnosed, and approximately 589,430 Americans are expected to die of cancer, making cancer the second most common cause of death in the United States, according to nearly one out of every four deaths in America. Cancer Awareness Month emphasizes the importance of prevention and early detection through health screenings, as well as the promotion of healthy lifestyles, including proper diet, exercise, and smoke-free environment. Cancer Awareness Month honors the memory of those we have lost, supports those that are still fighting cancer, and celebrates the survivors who inspire us through their strength and courage. And whereas the city of Los Banos recognizes the month of October as Cancer Awareness Month, a time to join together to battle all cancers, to raise awareness, and to send a message that ending all cancers must be the national health priority. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby proclaim October as Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Los Banos, and ask the citizens of Los Banos to wear pink, in an effort to raise awareness, to celebrate survivors, and to encourage those in the treatment of cancer. Our whole community, if you can, purchase these shirts. They are $15 to the fire department. This will help. This money goes directly for cancer research. Last year, a tremendous amount of money was raised, and we are just so pleased that our fire department has taken their time to help with this such a worthy cause. And all the rest of the people of Los Banos, who, with the cancer runs, the cancer awareness, the groups, the support groups that they have, it's not just the fire department and everyone that's fighting cancer in this community. Thank you all for everything that you've done, and please continue, because this needs to be wiped out. We are number one concern, wiping out cancer for everyone in the world, not just Americans, everyone in the world. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Tim, do you want to say anything? Robert?
Thank you very much. On behalf of Los Banos Professional Firefighters Association, I AFF Local 3703, I'd like to thank you very much for this proclamation. Again, this is something that's really dear to all of us. We've joined up once again with Pink Heels to bring awareness to Los Banos, and we encourage everybody in our community to please come out and join our fundraiser and support us by wearing pink in the month of October. You still have shirts available. You can buy them from Fire Station down on Seventh Street. If you have any questions, you can talk to Mary Lou. But we do need all funds in by September 18th, so that we can have available for you to pick up by the 5th of October. If you have any questions, again, Mary Lou Gilardi at 827-7025. Thank you very much.
Also, on the October 7th, help us celebrate the 125th year anniversary of this fire department. 125 years, and our paid staff have not been on that long. It's been mostly volunteerism for the majority of the 125 years. And with members of the city, with the volunteers, they helped to save so many lives in our community, and we're going to give them a special recognition in two weeks, October 7th. And Tim, would you please bring that fabulous video that was shown at the plaza when we had the movie in the park? And if you could bring an engine over, and maybe people could view that a little bit early. So please help us celebrate 125 years of a wonderful organization and a very caring and selfless organization. Thank you so much. Okay, let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach your podium, please state your name and city of residence. And I would remind you, if you have cell phones, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, community. I'm Sandy Lemus. I live in Los Banos.
Bonnie Roberts, and I live in Los Banos. And we are here on the behalf of Salvation Army. I know that you guys are aware of who we are, and we're here to stay. Okay? And we run about 3,500 people a week, I mean, a month through that center, and it takes a lot of funds to do that. And it's all from donations. And we have a big fundraiser coming up on October 12th. It's our second annual golf, or third annual golf tournament. And this last summer, we sent over 60 kids to camp. And either we deal with them now and send them camp, or he's going to get them. And I'm pointing to our police chief. So please, come out and support us. It's a... I have the... If you want to pass those out to the children of them, please. Okay?
Would you just kind of give them to the city clerk, please?
Yeah, give them to the city clerk, yeah. It's going to be a great time. We've got... It's at Pheasant Run Golf Course in Chauchoa. I don't know if you've ever played it. I've played it once, and it's a... My brothers play it. It's a really good course. We're also gearing up for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Okay? Our bell ringing, we need volunteers for bell ringing. If you will please just come in, come to 1231 Fourth Street, or at 827-4945, if you want to volunteer to ring the bell. Or if you have kids, grandkids, neighbors, anybody that you want to ring the bell. We start this year before Thanksgiving, before... We hadn't been allowed to start until afterwards, but now they say we can. And we've lost one spot, Kmart, so that'll be kind of hard for us, but it'll be made up. Our other one is Fill the Truck for Toys. That's at... We're partnering with Walmart, and it will only be on the weekend of November 27th, the last weekend in November, the first week in December, and the second week in December. And it is a receptacle that will be inside Walmart at the west end of the building where the vegetables are, and then it disperses off. It will be there, there will be somebody manning it, and all you have to do is just drop the toy in there and coat, or whatever it is. But we're looking forward to a great season, this season. We know that this town is a giving town for us, and just come and sponsor us. Come and see. And if you haven't been to the Salvation Army, please come and visit us. Come and see what we do down there. Okay? We're good people. Okay?
You are good people.
So that was Bonnie's five minutes. Now it's my five minutes.
Actually, no.
No?
No.
But I was going to talk about some other stuff.
Well, other than Salvation Army?
Well, sort of. Cancer Awareness. Okay, I'll come back.
Okay. That would be better. You'd help me out. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Lamone, resident of Los Banos, employee of Republic Services. Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and respected council member. I would like to inform our residents about the annual fall cleanup hosted by the city of Los Banos and Republic Services. The event will be held Saturday, September 26th, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Bring all your unwanted items you can't place into your regular garbage or green waste containers for free disposal. Green waste must be separated from other materials. Car tires will be accepted, nine tires maximum. Any more than that, the state of California requires you to obtain a tire hauler permit. Batteries will be accepted, car and truck only. Electronic waste will also be accepted, such as TVs, computers, computer parts, DVD, VCR players, and cell phones. Household hazardous waste materials will not be accepted at this event. This includes paint, chemicals, household batteries, and medical waste. You can recycle your used motor oil by placing up to two gallons of oil and two oil filters in a sealed container along your recycle cart on your service day. If you have questions on how to dispose of hazardous waste materials, please contact Merced County Associations of Governments at 826-1163. I want to encourage our residents and commercial business to continue to recycle to help our state mandated diversion goal 75% by the year 2020. If you need assistance in implementing a recycling program for your home or business, please contact me at 826-Eric Lamone, 826-0231. Cal Recycle is very pleased with our city's efforts in our recycling, but there's always room for improvement. Thank you, guys, and have a great night.
And recycling days are again?
September 26th, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
September 26th, 7:00 a.m.?
Oh, I'm sorry. Merced County Springfield parking lot.
Okay.
On the corner of F and Forest Streets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Wait a minute, let me reset here.
Sure.
Okay, you can start now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leo Ramirez, and I live in Los Banos. I would like to request that the city council place backyard chickens on the agenda for next month. Our society is becoming increasingly troubled by the economy, the environment, food safety, animal welfare, and emergency preparedness. Many of us want to strive to become more self-reliant. We are now learning that what past generations already knew, that gardening, canning food, and raising chickens for eggs are greatly beneficial. There are a few people who are against having backyard chickens, and it's usually because they have not been properly educated as to the benefits. Some of the more common complaints are noise, smell, rodents, disease, and property value. And we'd like to address each and every one of these complaints one by one. One, noise. Roosters are the main source of noise that people are typically complaining about. If you don't have roosters, chickens aren't noisy, and my request has nothing to do with roosters, just hens. While hens do cluck and peep softly during the day, they go to bed at dusk and remain quiet all night. One of the many advantages of keeping backyard chickens is for the benefits of having an endless supply of farm-fresh eggs. Solution? You do not need a rooster to enjoy farm-fresh eggs every morning. In fact, hens will lay better if there's no rooster around to disturb their routine. A good city chicken law will not allow for roosters. Two, smell. Yes, chickens can smell just like dogs, cats, rabbits, hamsters, gerbils, and even people, if not taken care of properly. We are not talking about a 300-foot commercial chicken house with 30,000 chickens next door. We are talking about six to 12-hanging hens laying hens in a backyard setting. The chickens themselves do not smell. It's only their feces that has the potential to stink. For example, a flock of six hens weighs less than 30 pounds and generates less waste than one average dog. Chicken manure is a highly valued fertilizer that can be used in the garden. Dog and cat manure can't, because of the parasites and human diseases it can harbor. This is where crafting a good chicken law comes into play. If the law only allows chickens in a well-maintained coop, then a chicken owner with a messy, filthy, smelly coop is out of compliance and can be cited under the law. Three, will having chickens in my backyard attract rodents? Some claim that keeping chickens will attract mice and rats and other unwanted pests. If you think you don't already have these outside your home, you are mistaken. Everyone does. This is an agriculture town with a mixture of farming plots and suburban homes. As with any other pets and their food, such as dog food, cat food, and bird feeders, these too will attract unwanted rodents and pests if you aren't properly containing the food. So having backyard chickens would fall under that same category and require the properly containment of feed. Four, aren't chickens considered livestock? The definition of livestock is farm animals raised as an asset. Chickens are a dual-purpose animal, raised for profit or treated like pets. Hens are small, harmless, friendly, entertaining, and easy to care for. Six small hens aren't livestock any more than a vegetable garden is a farm. Five, do chickens carry diseases? Backyard chickens are quite healthy and have less disease than your average dog or cat. While there's a possibility of mites or salmonella, you have a greater chance of getting sick from eating spinach from a grocery store than you will from your neighbor's chickens. Six, will chickens help or hurt the economy? Through research, it has been noted that egg-laying hens have not created a financial burden for cities that allow chickens, nor has it spurred fighting among neighbors nor presented a noise, odor, or rodent problem, or reduced property values, or posed a public health threat. In fact, public officials in cities where backyard chickens have been permitted for years view it as beneficial community-building and self-sustaining activity that they promote and encourage. Los Banos can gain income from issuing reasonable annual licenses and collecting fines from owners who don't comply with the ordinance. Also, there are many feed and pet stores in town that would benefit from new pet owners. While I have just countered the typical negative perspectives, here are some of the many positive aspects of keeping backyard chickens. Chickens boast environmental, educational, and nutritional benefits other pets cannot. They provide chemical-free pest control, eliminate disease-transmitting insects, control weeds, and produce valuable nitrogen-rich fertilizer. They are a living lesson to children that food does not originate in the supermarket freezer section in nugget form. Chicken keepers view their coops, flocks, and yards as a source of pride, landscaping, decorating, and tending to their cleanliness fastidiously. They can provide food security for poor families. They lay healthier eggs compared to store-bought eggs, and on average, a hen produces a quarter pound of valuable garden fertilizer daily. They control flies and other pests not add to them, and dispose of weeds and chicken scraps that otherwise might end up in the landfill. Please pass a sensible regulation that encourages families to grow their own food. Members of the city council, I urge you to consider amending the current ordinance to allow for backyard chickens. I have circulated a petition on change.org, and we are several hundred strong and growing. Hundreds of Los Banos citizens have joined in the fight to legalize chickens in our community, and I am hopeful, after hearing my arguments for this cause, you will grant my petition to revise the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. I would like to outline the procedure for you, though. We can't... This body, right now, cannot accept to say that we're going to put this on an agenda because it's an ordinance and it has to go through the planning commission, and it also has to go through our city staff. So if you would please, as a favor to me, give the city clerk your name and phone number.
All right.
Okay? And then we will have someone from the city contact you. And if you'd like to bring a few representatives, we'll have the city person, I think is probably going to fall on the police chief and the city manager, and that will be the first step.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yeah, come on back.
I'll come up with a new name. I'm Sandy Lemus. I'm still from Los Banos, and I'm going to talk about some other issues. First off, I'd like to commend the fire department for doing the cancer awareness services. A lot of people were not aware that I actually went through cancer treatment last year for breast cancer. When I was going through chemo, unfortunately, my husband and son put me under house arrest, and I could not leave the house under any circumstances, because they didn't want me to get germs. But it's wonderful, all the community's support, how much people help, and I really thank the fire department for going above and beyond. There's a wonderful cancer awareness event coming up in Turlock. It's put on by Emmanuel Cancer Center, which is where I got my treatment. It's actually... The fire department's involved, and I would love to get one of these programs going here. Amy, somebody from Good Morning America...
What's her name?
Amy. Amy somebody from Good America is going to be the speaker. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful event, and I would love to get that event here, because people really need to be aware. And a side issue with breast cancer is, breast cancer is increasing in men. So you do need to be aware of that, and be aware of your body, and do checks. Also, another side issue, the Hope Center, we're expanding our services. We are launching a GED preparation program starting October 1st. Portrait of California was issued by United Way of Merced County, and they kind of divided the county in half, and we have a 37.4% adults that do not have their diploma. We have a very unskilled labor force, so we really need to help these people get their GEDs. If anybody would like information, we can provide transportation, resources, we can pay for the GED test. pay for the GED test. They can get ahold of me at 826-5648. I did not give you the Salvation Army number because I'm not, we already used up our time, so you can call me at my home for that information. Thank you. Jim's going to love this. Ask for Jim Lemus. 826-5648. Okay, and we're ready to go. They can come in early if they'd like, and we've already gotten a good response.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hello, Bertha Faria, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. Come and visit downtown Los Banos on Saturday as we hold our annual Fall Street Fair from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. We have vendors, entertainment, pony and train rides for the kids. On Saturday evening, you can join the Los Banos Arts Council for their first concert of the season with Hook Slide beginning at 7:30. And the Los Banos Seroptimists are now accepting applications for their Live Your Dream Award. This program offers cash grants to women who are working to better their lives through additional schooling and skills training. And for application information, you can call Barbara at 509-9664. We welcome JNN Restaurant to membership with the Chamber. This new restaurant is located downtown at 933 B Sixth Street and offers breakfast and lunch. They hope to extend to dinner hours in the near future, and will be scheduling a grand opening and a ribbon cutting soon. We are nearing our final plans on the 2015 Tomato Festival and invite the community out to this admission-free event on Saturday, October 3rd. Opening ceremonies with the flag-raising from our local veterans will begin at 10:00 a.m., followed by a day filled with food, contests, music, and demonstrations. And I have a brief comment on item number eight, number two. We at the Chamber would request that the city do all it can to support and promote community events as it has in the past. Please take into consideration, as you review the fees for the special events ordinance, the cost-prohibitive factor that our organizations will now have to consider as they plan their annual events, both great and small. What often makes a community is those organizations that take it upon themselves to provide positive community-building events, those events that give our residents a quality of life and a sense of place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hi, I'm Donna Mendez. I am president of the Los Banos Downtown Association. I'm also a business owner on Sixth Street. So I wrote mayor and city council letter, and I thought I would just come and read it to you instead of emailing it to you. But before I do that, I also wanted to just let everyone know, what we're doing for the Downtown Association in October is we're having our scarecrow contest. Each business last year had a scarecrow in front of their business, and the general public got to vote as many times as they wanted to what their favorite scarecrow was. It was just something to bring just some happiness to downtown. And this year, we're going to do it again, and it'll be like the whole month of October up until Halloween. And we're also adding this year that the businesses have an option of doing scarecrows or witches. So we hope everyone would come out and vote for that. It just decorates the downtown, and it makes it festive. So I wanted to read this letter to Mayor Bilalta and the Los Banos City Council. I'm writing to you on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association in regards to establishing a better partnership between the City of Los Banos and the Los Banos Downtown Association. The Downtown Association and the Downtown Merchants are trying very hard to keep our historic downtown lovely and thriving. In the past few years, most of the merchants have worked together to maintain and keep our storefronts clean and eye appealing. This includes keeping city sidewalks and tree beds maintained as best as we can. We were asked by the city to help them out due to budget issues. This is an example of how most businesses are working with the city in keeping downtown the heart of Los Banos welcoming and inviting. However, I feel that we are not getting the same support in return. One of our concerns is the implementation of a special event fee. This year, the Los Banos Downtown Association hosted its annual event in August, Grapes, Hops, and Shops, a wine and beer walk. The money raised goes towards downtown beautification and expenses for maintenance such as keeping the tree lights operating properly. We were also asked by the city to help defray the cost of hanging the seasonal banners. This year, we gave the city $1,550. We also host the Christmas Evening Downtown every year. This has been a free-of-charge event to our community. The association would like to expand and add to existing events, but it is discouraging when more rules, regulations, and fees are put upon us. We have so many times heard from the people of the community that they are wanting more things to do in Los Banos. If other communities can do it, why can't we? Having successful events in Los Banos enhances the quality of life for our community. Bottom line, having successful events in Los Banos benefits the city. I would like to see our city be more cooperating and working with the Downtown Association. I've listed just a few ideas as a start. City fees should be waived or be very minimal when we try to hold these events. As stated earlier, we have helped the city monetarily and with physical help from our merchants. We should not have to take on any more expenses. Closing our Main Street downtown should be made easier when an event is held. We should not have so many restrictions. Our association has full coverage, but the words liability and expense always seem to be a roadblock. I would love to hear the words from the city, what can we do to help you make this event more successful? The signage regulations need to be reviewed for downtown. We received that letter from the city. The small, and I emphasize, small signboards, banners, and flags in front of stores gives Main Street personality. Every city has a downtown, and every city knows that their downtown is the backbone to its community. It is exciting to see many new businesses opening up the last few months in our downtown. As merchants, we will continue to take pride in our business and our community and do our best to stay positive. We are just asking the city for a better working relationship. You help us, and we help you. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rhonda Lowe, a resident of Los Banos, and to the mayor and city council. I'll put my glasses on so I can read these small letters. I'm here tonight as a downtown merchant and a member of the Los Banos Downtown Association. I would like to comment on the proposed fees associated with special events. There is no one that better understands that there are associated costs with doing business better than a businessperson. So it is not my suggestion that there should be no fees associated with an event. Rather, I would suggest that we look at what the hard costs really are and the importance of the city partnering with local businesses to help business succeed, which in turn brings in revenue to the city through increased sales tax and improving the quality of life in our community when people do shop local. There are numerous examples of how great partnerships are working in the communities all around us, whose events bring in hundreds, even thousands, of people to their downtown, creating a vibrant and exciting place together. Merced has many events, but their farmer's market and art hop are shining examples. Turlock has a farmer's market, car shows, and outdoor concerts. Hanford Town, not much larger than Los Banos, offers spectacular events. Most notably, their Thursday Night Market draws thousands of people to their certified market, live beer, not live beer, live music, beer and wine garden, and family fun. I said all of this to say this. There is a core group of very enthusiastic businesspeople that have made not only a financial, but an emotional commitment to our community. Many see our community not for what it is, but for what it could be. We look at communities around us doing the very things we want to do, and they are able to make it happen rather than being told of all the objections or having the idea killed with excessive fees. I know that we have some council members who wish to see our community thrive and become the vibrant beacon that draws people to us rather than sending them elsewhere. We can do this by working together, but it requires more than just lip service. If Los Banos wants to portray itself as being business-friendly, nothing would say that more than partnering with its own businesses to see real growth in more than just building homes in our town. So I'm here as a merchant, a member of our Downtown Association, but also a member of this community who would enjoy seeing events grow, such as the Downtown Wine Stroll, Christmas Evening Downtown, the parades and street fairs, events that bring, and you've heard this before, a sense of community to a town that would be made better by bringing us together. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. Los Banos, so I'm going to try to make this short because what I've got to say here. This here is in reflection to the last council meeting that I've watched the video for because I was able to make it, and I'd like to just share some of my thoughts about some of the things that were said. So no pun intended. Here it goes. There was concern, there was a concern with many spots being worn down by the current vendor at Pacheco Park. Many areas are very stressed. It's a park. The current vendor at the park uses due diligence by shifting the setup into different areas to avoid said stress areas. Regarding chuck holes and gopher holes, et cetera, it's the city's responsibility to ensure such dangers are appropriately corrected as they should always be. Many other events have been held at the park. Chuck holes and gopher holes are present at these events. It should be a routine maintenance. Creating a one-day market based on what other cities do. We are Los Banos, not other cities. A one-day-a-week market in our community isn't comfortable to our unique living style here. A majority of the population work outside the city, bringing income into Los Banos. Most of the community that earn a living in our city work in retail, having many varied days off, not every Saturday and/or Sunday. Many of these people like to purchase the fresh-picked products of a local farmer over the grocery chain products that lack the natural flavors and sweetness. These same people only have the Monday holiday off to be able to have the availability to make purchases. Thus, by restricting it to a one-day, not only this allows the people of our community to make the desired purchases, but you're inviting the same money brought into Los Banos to be taken right back out, placing the same people and going to other locations in the surrounding areas. Based on the concern of farmer's markets in general being open only during a certain time of the year, May through September, I suggest that that issue should be recognized, the fact that you're talking about large circus-like providers that practice only during these timeframes due to a drop in sales during the off months of the large population areas mentioned, compared to a small city with a small vendor that has been allowed two days for almost two years. You continually speak of doing what it takes to help the people of Los Banos to have a stable income, yet at the same time, I can't help but to believe you are attempting to shut down one man, shut one man down. I feel that any current vendor that has been vending for at least 12 months should be grandfathered into the same use up to the two days and up to three days on a Monday-type holiday that has previously been allowed to do. That has caused no problems to any person or entity thereof. I've never seen any vendor operate three, four, or five days a week plus a holiday, as mentioned by a council member, so I don't see a problem with the current vendor's needs of two days a week being Saturdays and Sundays plus a Monday holiday. A statement that produce can only be grown during a certain period of the year and not year-round is false and entirely misleading. Fact is, produce is indeed grown and provided in Central Valley all year-round. Apples, grapefruit, beans, cabbage, Brussels sprouts, beets, broccoli, and carrots are just a few items that are available for harvest during the early winter and winter months. Here is a page, here is a one page of several pages of produce that mark 26 items harvested during the early winter and winter months, and I am certain that many of them are listed in the infinite list of items recognized by the farmer's market items. In closing, I am in high hopes that this entire issue is not an agenda to stop one particular person or business from being in business or otherwise destroy his ability to continue making a small living and taking away an asset to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven. Consideration of Approval Consent Agenda. Items on a consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have Director Maloney.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 155300 through 155556 in the amount of $1,228.91. waiver of administrative permit fee for evangelical free church. Minutes for the June 17, 2015 city council meeting. Minutes for July 1, 2015 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5695, amending the fiscal year 2015/2016 budget by increasing the appropriation amount in the general fund for revenue and expenditures in the amount of $5,704.32 for a spay-and-neuter program grant awarded by the California Department of Food and Agriculture. City Council Resolution Number 5696, authorizing the city manager to purchase one study equipment from Bell Fort Instrument to be used in relocation study of the Los Banos Municipal Airport, and amending the 2015/2016 budget by increasing the community and economic development expenditures in the amount of $6,900. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to remove item F.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to remove an item? So there are, you want to remove an item? Okay, do you like to make a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F.
Okay, Mrs. Stonegrove? Motion by Solvera, second by Stonegrove, to approve the consent agenda as stated, items A through E, and removing item F for separate consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Oh, Senator? There we go.
Yes, thank you. In reading this proposal, it says that we have an agreement with Waddell Engineering to work on this airport study. And with that decision, Waddell had recommended that the city use a particular vendor to purchase the instruments to do the reading. My question is, does that have to go out to bid, or is this under a different special circumstance?
Who wants to answer that? I'm just going to click everybody's mic here. Who else?
It's through the existing contract with Waddell. It does not, it does not require it to go out to bid.
Okay, so could you explain to me how, because of the contract and his recommendation?
Well, he actually, he actually looked at the recommendation for us and talked to three different vendors himself, and this was the only one that responded with any number. So he did what we would normally do in our purchasing policy for this amount of money. He did it, and we only had one bid to come back.
Okay, so would this council have to look at all those three bids?
No, you do not. We just have to go out and talk to three people, and if they respond, we pick the lowest at this financial amount.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned as to how that's different from any other item that we have to review a bid on.
I believe that when it's less than 30,000, you get, and you ask for three bids, and it comes back under 30, the city manager can sign.
Okay, that answers the question.
And what we did here, why we brought this back, the bid was actually secondary to the actually changing the budget, that we had to change the budget. That was the biggest thing. The bid was a secondary item, which the city manager could have signed because there was, we did try to get three bids on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions on that item? Mrs. Lewis, did you want to make a motion? Okay.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept item number seven F of the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, Ms. Freya.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis, second by Mr. Freya, to approve item F on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item- Let's go on to item, I'll get to you in a minute, Mr. Freya. Okay. Item number, item A. Let's see, what number was that? That was eight A. Public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for the regulation of special events located in Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. And we'll go to Senior Planner Elms, and it's-
Me first.
Oh, oh, yes. Just one minute, I want to read the other part of this. Okay. Item 1A, ordinance number 1134, adding Article 41, Chapter III, to Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to the special events on public property. Now we'll go to Mr. Freya.
I have, have to recuse myself on this because it's been determined by the city attorney in our analysis that I have a conflict of interest because my wife is the executive director of Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce runs special events on a regular basis, and it could have a, an effect on our income one way or another. So, you'll excuse me.
Okay. Gil? Okay. We have, looks like item A, we have two actions, so we will take ordinance number 1134 first, and we'll go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at the last city council meeting on September 2nd, we introduced the ordinance, but I will go through the presentation just to give some background on the proposed ordinance and what we're asking city council to do tonight. So a background on our existing policy, or, well, it's really our existing procedures. Currently, right now, individuals or groups fill out a form to notify the city of their special event. It goes through the police department, or the Community and Economic Development Department, depending on the type of event. The city then routes through the various departments that are affected by this event. It would go to public safety, depending if there's street closures, or if it's involving infrastructure, it'd go to public works, already, street closures or any barricades that need to happen. And currently, right now, there is no formal process in place. We do have a current ordinance that does discuss special or, excuse me, special events, but the intent is to address temporary uses of private property that are not a use-by-right and require additional regulation. This particular ordinance is actually geared towards temporary uses on private properties, such as like pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots, parking lot sales, promotional outdoor events. So it doesn't really address parades, those things that need street closures, processions, those types of events. So our proposed ordinance that we have before you, any person desiring to sponsor a parade, public assembly, or other special event on public property shall first obtain a permit. It goes through and defines what a parade is and what a special event is. There are exceptions within the proposed ordinance. Exceptions are funeral processions, parades on sidewalk, spontaneous events, government entity events, expressive activity, block parties, and farmers' markets. And really, the block parties, it's because it has, it has its own ordinance that is coming before you, as well as certified farmers' markets. Also, the proposed ordinance does go through, if you do need a special event permit, what you must obtain. So first, not less than 30 days or more than one year and two months before the event, you must apply for your special event permit. Within three working days, the Community and Economic Development Department shall circulate to the affected departments for comments, so that would be public works, fire, and police. And then, within 30 days, the Community and Economic Development Department shall render a decision to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the permit. And then, any appeal on that decision can be made to the planning commission. Through the ordinance, it also requires that an indemnity agreement be signed to reimburse the city for any costs incurred to any damages on city property, and then, the event must obtain a liability insurance of at least $1 million per occurrence, and then they shall pay the city for all city department service charges which are incurred in connection with the result from the permit. So what we have before you, and this is based on our discussion from the last city council meeting, broken down what the application processing fee would entail. And what we're proposing is, and it's written in detail for you in your staff report, as well as in the resolution, there would be a processing fee of the application fee. So that would be about $150, and this would be for the review of the application, to analyze the application in accordance with the proposed ordinance, to route the application to the various departments, and analyze and provide comments to the Community and Economic Development Department. This would be the time that public works, public safety, which is fire and police, would take in analyzing and then providing comments to the Community and Economic Development Department, and then time to issue and deny, or deny a permit. This would be a full cost recovery. This is, as I said, broken down in your staff report, so it's about an hour of the Community and Economic Development Department's time, and then about 15 minutes for police, fire, and public works. Then we go on to event service charges. And just to clarify, the proposed resolution is only setting forth the fees for the application processing. So that's the $150. It is not setting forth the event service charges, as it varies, and it really depends on the size and intensity of an event. So if I were to break this down, and this was based on our conversation that we did have on September 2nd, one overtime police officer would equate to $50. And because of a memorandum of understanding that the city of Los Banas does have with our Police Officers Association, it would be a four-hour overtime minimum, and that is because of the MOU with the Police Officers Association. So if your event is only two hours, the city is having to pay those employees for four hours. Parades are generally, they require one officer at each intersection, and really, parades are the most intense, but if we were to break them down, processions are different, and the city, Police Chief and I sat down after the discussion with city council, and really tried to break down our events and break down our fees. So a parade, the difference is that a parade has the streets blocked, they're 24 hours in advance, there's no parking signs that the police department needs to put up. The public works department gets involved in barricades off the streets, as well as all the alleys, and even sometimes where the staging area is, they go out further, or in other areas, they need to barricade for another block out. So that's the most intense of an event, is a parade. Now, a procession is always moving, and typically, and speaking to our police chief, it's really only the use of the police officers. There's not really any barricading of streets. The police chief, they are able to block off intersections, and the procession passes, and then the, the police department keeps moving. So procession would be significantly less than what you see as a parade would be charged for, as well as, say, a downtown event that's really only blocking, for instance, maybe the Strine Wine Stroll, that's only blocking off maybe two blocks of downtown. It would really only, it would not consist of any police officer time, but it would consist of the barricades. So it would be significantly less, though, than a parade. So the public works, they would, for their barricades, and this is really looking at more of a parade, and about a 10-block, possibly, a parade, our typical parades, it's closing streets and alleys, and it would be two employees at about an hour and a half. So then, our, also our parks facilities, so depending on the event, it is $35 an hour to use the park. I did speak to Paul Cardoza, our parks supervisor, and he was able to confirm for me that the tiger sharks are currently paying for Mother's Day in the park. They pay for both of those days. Folks that use the, the parks for events rent the park, and it's either, the Pacheco Park, for instance, it is $280 all day, or it's $560 for the both days. So, but if you wanted it to rent for hourly, you can do that for $35 an hour. So we are currently charging a special events for, for the use of our parks facilities. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt ordinance number 1134, adding Article 41 of Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to special events, and then adopt resolution number 5697 establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of special events. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
I think at this time, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing unless council has any pressing questions at this time. Okay? I would like to open the public hearing to receive comment on, and I'm going to read item number two. We can listen to the public hearing on both of them. City Council Resolution Number 5697, establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of special events. So if you'd like to comment on A1 or 2, now is your time.
Joe Mushada from Los Banas, and I would like to, Mayor and council members, thank you for your time, but I would like to state that the, my perspective on certain activities that we do in regards to special event of the Our Lady of Fatima issue is a expressive religious, cultural activity and does not constitute a, a procession or parade. And I hope that you take that into consideration in your review as that definition of expressive religious cultural activity. And under that circumstance, we should not be subject to any issues of parade or procession. That's the interpretation of our activity. The way I understand it, maybe not all our members do, but if we approach it in that sense, that would, that would eliminate us from that. It just happens that we do it every year. We express our cultural religious activity every single year. So please accept that as our definition of our event, or might anyway.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
I'd like to make a suggestion on, excuse me, I like, Bob Rees, Los Banos. I'd like to make a suggestion. We now know and understand that there are fees regulated by the city that, that you need to try to recover in some way. We know you're not trying to profit. But it's my suggestion that maybe, if I'm an applicant, for example, I come up and I want to apply and I want to pay fees and stuff, that I get a estimated breakdown of what the fees are, so I'm looking, and I can understand what I'm paying for. There's no way you can really possibly give an accurate, but you can give an estimate. I think what, by doing so, that would help the city itself in eliminating from any propaganda and all this other crap that can be going on, we're notorious for. So again, it's just a matter of, if I come up there and I apply for something, then by default, I should get some sort of a form that lets me understand exactly what I'm paying for and why. Kind of like what we're just showing up there. Thank you.
That's part two, Bob. That's what will take place in part two.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Good evening. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate all this speeching. My name is Fernando Barba, Los Banas resident, and I am here in order to represent the Spanish community with the Waddell Panas Society. It's, we have been in our cultural procession for the last, since I've been joined in this community for 50 years. So, as this person mentioned, most of what we do is once a year, two hours, we use the police department for actually hour, and our parade is, our procession basically is for about 45 minutes to an hour. And it's normally, I would say probably a mile long, with few people following it. And this cultural, and also, I would say, is kind of gathering our community together principle, is one of the most principal issues for this Spanish community. So in order to continue doing this, we need to have new people to think about what we're doing, and as far, as I know, you know exactly what it is, but we are kind of agreed to follow the instructions and the proceeds that the city will issue, but we also have some consideration for what, what we basically do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Could you come back for a minute, please? I have a council member who would like to ask you a question.
Sure. Any, anything. I hope I can answer.
Mrs. Lewis?
Is it Barba?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barba. You said that you normally have two police officers that accompany your, your procession. What have you, what has your organization paid in the past for services to the police?
We haven't paid any at all, as far as I know. They just call me a peer for this matter, but I will find out, and I can let you know, but as far as I know, we have the sponsor by the diocese of Fresno to do what we do. So as far as your answer, I have no, I mean, your question, I have no answer.
Okay.
At this moment, but I will.
I'm sorry, but I'll have you come to the podium, okay? Thank you, Mr. Barba.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would you come forward, please? If you'd like to speak, I want you to speak, but you gotta, and your name, sir, and your city?
Yeah, my name is Alberto, and I'm a member of the Panas Society, and like, he's the boss, and I have the answer because a couple, a couple of years ago, I am charged all the Panas Society, and I was dealing with all the paperwork, and thank you for the time, and the past two years, I have no problem, and all the submitted papers, they get on time, and we haven't charged any money, and I appreciate the hard work you guys do, and just what we are as a community, we thanks, and I hope we'll go together and get enough fee for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum or the public hearing on ordinance number 1134, city council resolution number 5697? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Edward Amaro, resident of Los Banas, and I'm director in Los Banas Portuguese DES Association, and also a committee member with the Our Lady of Fatima Society. And first off, I just want to thank the council for their concerns about the cost at the last meeting, which resulted in the staff report. So, you know, that's one of the things that I've heard from several of the people, it's the cost, you know, and, and I understand that. I also wanted to thank staff for their information in this last staff report, which kind of details the cost. And really, when it, if you look at the staff report, there's pretty detailed information about the permit fees that were listed, $150 and why they're that. There's also pretty detailed information about the public works fees and what they were, if you have to have barricades and things. The part that's a little less clear in the report, and, and I got some clarification from the chief, was able to talk to him, was the police charges. So the police charges don't really, and I understand each event's different, but they're not really spelled out quite as clearly. I'm sure it depends on the event. This event, of course, has been going on for both of them for many years, so you would, hopefully, would have a pretty good idea of what the cost is going to be. I think the concern I have, and I think the groups too, is that as the staff person, Ms. Elms pointed out, today you're passing the, the ordinance and a resolution that sets forth the permit fees, but she made it clear, the council's not setting any of the service fees. So there's no oversight on these service fees. The service fees are going to get charged to these organizations based on what the actual cost would be. And that makes sense, and, and like with the public works, they kind of lay it out, what's it going to be. The police charge is a little less clear, and the concern I have is I've talked to other people, same organizations, different cities, where they had similar ordinances, and it started off at a certain amount, and then later on, they had different charges, and they would fluctuate from year to year, they'd have less people- They'd have less people at the event and the charges were more. I mean, they weren't even similar, and one of the persons here can speak to it. And so, and I asked them, well, why, you know, why were these charges different? And they said, well, it really kind of depended on who the police chief was or the city manager, not, you know, because the council wasn't involved with setting these fees. So, you know, and I taught, know the police chief, have a good relationship with him. I think he wants to try to work with us, but I'm telling you, down the road, that's a concern because they really, these fees were not consistent in these other jurisdictions. So that's one of the big concerns is what are the fees going to be? Are they going to be the same every year? I mean, they have less people, you've got more fees. The other thing, we do want to cooperate. If there's ways we can reduce the fees, since there's volunteers, that would be great. I won't speak too much to the constitutional issues that Mr. Machado raised, other than I will note that before it was, at the last meeting, it was said, well, we need to charge all groups these fees. We have city dollars involved. But when I look at the ordinance, you expressly exclude activities or events conducted by a governmental entity. So I'm like thinking, well, I'm not sure quite why that's the case. I mean, they're somehow excluded from paying the fees in the ordinance. And then most of the other exceptions really have to do with First Amendment rights, but I think as Mr. Machado pointed out, that's arguably there's First Amendment rights when you're dealing with religious expression. So in closing, you know, I just want to see fairness and reasonable fees. I think that's what I'm hearing from the people at the chamber and that there is some kind of oversight going forward because, you know, I understand in other jurisdictions that that's not, you would think the fees would be the same, but they weren't in the same event, same people, actually less people sometimes. So my concern is, is that it's fair and reasonable for all the groups and that they're able to continue with their activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hi, my name is Kathy, resident of Los Banas. They pretty much said, a lot of what I was already going to say, the few things I want to bring up, in fact, Stacy had mentioned at the last time it was brought to the meeting, the one-fifty fee is based on an hour of her time, the police department, the fire department and public works. But they said that some of these events have been going on for so long, it's sort of like a stamp and go, because they have the same route, they have the same amount of volunteers that have to work it, same amount of police and they know what intersections, where the cones are supposed to go, everything else, such as your DES and your other parades that have been going on for years. I was wondering if it was an option, if it's something that is just a red stamp and it's automatic, if there could be less of a fee for them to do those and not flat one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, because I'm sure it doesn't take Stacy an hour to do the DES parade. I was just concerned about that, so that if something is repetitive, they do it every year, it's an annual event, if it could be less.
Why don't we get you an answer?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
This is the minimum, the absolute minimum, one-hundred-and-fifty bucks.
Okay, so it is, that's it.
That's the minimum. That is your rock bottom.
Okay.
And that we're not in the business to make money.
Okay.
And we keep saying this over and over.
I just had to ask.
It comes back that it sounds like we don't want to be fair or we don't want to, you know, do what's right. We want to see events in town. We just, we're worried about the health, safety and welfare of thirty-seven thousand people. So we want you to do well. We want you to succeed, because when you succeed, we do. But we have to be insured. We have to have safety, health, safety, welfare. So yes, what you're hearing is Stacy, the staff, the city attorney, myself, we have spent an inordinate amount of time on this and it just seems like we keep rehashing it over and over. And I got to tell you, it's getting on my nerves.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be on your nerves.
No, I'm just, I'm just, if you can't tell, it is.
I just have to be.
Because we keep, no, we keep having the same conversation over and over. So one-hundred-and-fifty bucks, that's the minimum. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. The other thing I wanted to, I was looking at how much it would cost in looking at the fees. I need to know for your police officer, maybe Chief Bracy could answer a question, if it's a minimum of four hours that you're going to be paying him, can we, for anyone at any event, utilize him for that whole four hours?
Garrett, would you, here's the microphone right there.
Yeah, if I understand your question correctly, Kathy, yes, I think we could, as long as I, as long as it's something that I approve of, yes.
Okay, because I'm just looking at a minimum, you know, a minimum amount of hours. And most of your parades, they might be used to cross Pacheco one time and that's it. And I don't know how much time that would involve.
Well, you have to keep in mind that there are MOU-related issues where there's required minimums, so it just gets tricky and it's difficult. And I'd love to address the idea of what Ed talked about and some of the other parades. I hate to do it from this microphone though, so I'd love to talk about that further if you guys are interested in it.
Okay. And the other one is I don't know, are vital, vital people part of the police department since it's set up by the police department? If you request to have the vital team do something, because I know at the one parade that went to the DES hall, I think there were six or eight vitals. Is that part of that charge or no, because they're volunteers?
Okay. The vital volunteers are individuals who have been basically volunteering for city events for a number of years. And, and part of what I, what I spoke about at the last meeting is we're not recharging our vital volunteers. And, and these individuals have worked, some of them twenty, thirty years. And, and they, they could possibly volunteer for an event, but the problem is that, I get, well, I'll just say it. If we could get more vital volunteers, and you have to be accepted by the police department and you have to be trained by the police department, it could greatly reduce the cost of your event, because they would be trained. But the fear of, of having a vital volunteer is that they, after they're trained by the police department, they are only going to volunteer for that one event. And that would be wrong after all the training that we put into, to all these volunteers. So, you know, this is a tough one. I've marched in these processions. I did it since I was ten years old. I've been in all these parades. We, we all want to make, make a fair deal and, and how we can keep all these going. And when I was talking to Gary and I was talking to the city manager, how can we reduce these costs? And the chief has offered to sit down with you and, and discuss these things.
I don't have the time. I'm just talking to the community.
No, 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 I know, but I still need, I still need to answer. I still need to answer all this.
I know, and that's why I'm asking.
And I can this time because the city attorney, it's an agendized item. So, so we can, we can kind of talk and the other council members want to chime in. I'd love to have them do it. But we have to find a way to meet our needs and for you to be profitable, and volunteerism is the way to go. Because we're talking two-hundred dollars for officer.
Yes.
Because we have an MOU. That MOU says that we have to pay four hours at fifty dollars per hour. That's two-hundred dollars per officer. If we could get vital people helping, trained vital people, and not just the ones that we have now, because they volunteer for a number of events and we're bringing them out. If we could have new people trained, we could get these costs down considerably. And then if, if, if they are able to, to do things within the city because we cover them under our workers' comp, it's possible to, to work that way. I don't know about lifting requirements with barriers. I'd have to discuss that with Mark Faison to, to know whether they could, they could actually participate in that area. But there's a way to get this down and to be minimal cost. And that way the police chief can feel well about what we're doing.
Which I think is, would solve some of your dilemma. If you had a list and said, this is what our charges are, this is how you can lower that charge. If you gave that to the people who are putting on these special events, it would be real helpful to them. There's less unknown, that it's that unknown that is causing your public to come up here and ask question after question after question.
I have, I have a suggestion. And the police chief actually opened the door and said, you know, he'd be willing to meet with people. Maybe we could do that. Maybe we could have a meeting and, and talk a little bit about, about, so there's more of an understanding and you, you would feel a little bit better about, about what's happening or make some suggestions to the police chief. But, but I can tell you, the key is volunteerism. And the only way to get these.
But some people don't agree with volunteerism. They'd rather have a paid police officer.
Okay, and, and yes, thank you for saying that. Yeah, they'd rather have a paid police officer, yes.
Yes, which is expensive, so that's why.
Okay, yes, and there's no way, there is no way for us to cut that cost. No way. Now, now, how many police officers do we need? How many, how much is a, is a parade going to cost? How much is the estimate for that? You know, if.
I went through and just went by what was listed on the packet that you all received. And I did it just, the minimum for the DES parade was seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. An Easter parade was seven-twenty-five, OLF's about three-twenty-five. I did have the Halloween parade for the kids and your homecoming parade, I had an estimate, but then I found out that the school district is part of the government, so they don't get charged. And so that's why I didn't bring that.
Okay, yes. Go ahead.
We talked about this at the last meeting and I'll say it again. Come in, talk to Gary, our police chief, and say, here's our event. It's this long, it's yellow, it's going to be this many hours a day, and he will work up a number for you. And then that's where the conversation starts. And what he'll try to do is find creative ways to lower that figure. We're not in the business to make money or jam anybody up. We don't want to be known as those guys. That's what government sounds like. What we want to do is just make sure our costs are covered and everyone is safe. That's simple. We're making way too much out of this tonight. So when you say, I don't know what the costs are, tell me more about your event and we'll tell you what the costs are. And I appreciate you doing the math. Fantastic. Do that. No, come in, that'll, that's a good starting point.
But that may not, that may not be the cost.
So again, I think we're, we're getting a little off track here.
I'm sorry to frustrate you.
No, no, no.
I feel like he's going to get a nerve gun out in a second.
No, it's because we keep asking the same question and I keep giving you the same answer and you're expecting a different answer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just concerned. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear all those remarks in regards to the pricing and how much it would be. This is the first time I saw the breakdown in regards to how much it would cost. So if you brought it up before, all I heard was one-hundred-and-fifty and the rest of it would be nominal. That's what I heard. I did not hear a breakdown in regards to.
Okay, Kathy, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to cut you off right now.
That's fine.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I, yes, yes, I, you already spoke, so I have to, I have to have someone else.
Do you want to buy some gas, some more time?
No, you can't come back up again just one time. If you have someone in your organization who else would like to speak, I would love to have them come up.
And I would ask that you consider the.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Okay. First I want to go through is anyone else, would anyone else like to speak at the public forum? Or public hearing, I'm sorry. Anyone else who'd like to speak at a public hearing on item A, A, is that it or, yes, A, A, one, two. Is there anyone who else would like to speak who hasn't, who has not approached the, the mic already? Okay. I would like to close the public hearing and bring it back to council level and, and comments, council members. Okay? Mrs. Lewis, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this, this is a real hot issue here in our city right now and there are some things that the city needed to take care of in regards to its financial budgeting of these type of events. And at our last meeting, when we had the public hearing, the one thing that I brought up is that no one here knew what the fees were going to be. And with open government, you need to provide that information to the public. They have the right to know what they're going to pay for any particular service that a city provides to them. And they have the right to see it, not just to hear it. I called a few cities and some chambers of commerce and wasn't able to get much help. One chamber of commerce that responded back to me was Hollister. And they put on approximately, between the chamber and their downtown association, twenty-five events a year. And this doesn't include the farmer's market at all, which is a totally separate event that they also put on. And right now their current fees are for a street closure is a hundred dollars and for permit for a parade is a hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, I was told by the chamber that their city council may be looking at some additional fees because the cost of staff time is not being covered for these two, these events that happen. On each of those events though, the city has to make a resolution for each of the events that happen. And then each of the events is charged the hundred dollars plus the hundred-and-fifty dollars if it, if it's a parade. So it's a hundred dollars for the street closure, a hundred-and-fifty for the parade. And, and when I looked at the fees that we were charging and, you know, it is significantly more. One of the things that came to my mind is for organizations that are having multiple events in a year, you know, we could possibly maybe work something out with the city where all that paperwork is submitted for your street fairs, for your parades, and have it done all at one time, so there's not this fee that's being done over and over again for each event that you're having, thereby reducing the cost. And if the event is the same, then, you know, the time to review them shouldn't be any more, I would think, than the hour of staff time to do it. In regards to the police department, that, that's a whole nother animal, because, you know, from what I'm hearing, just from one person coming here for their event, they've not been charged a fee by the police department. And I assume that we haven't charged anything for public works to put out barriers in our community for these events. So, you know, with that, I guess maybe I'm looking at perhaps if we can look at the possibility of charging the application fees and try that out for the first couple of years and see how that works out. And then if it's not working out that, the additional fees for public works and police that they're adding up to the point where our city can't encumber those costs, then we look at instituting that. It's just a lot of money all of a sudden for our businesses and our community organizations to bear. And I'm not saying that any one group is richer than the other, that's not the point. I'm just looking at the mere fact that it's, it's quite a bit of money. And in my calculations, unlike some of the other people, including the insurance that you have to get to cover the city, you're looking at maybe twelve-hundred dollars or more. So with that in mind, I'm, you know, I think the council has the right to say that we're not going to charge X amount of fees for a particular category or yes, we'll institute these fees for a particular category. And I'm only one voice up here. But we do talk about being a business-friendly community and I don't want the city to incur the cost of doing business, but I think we need to look at what we're asking of our community, of our business community, as far as what they bring in for entertainment and lifestyle for our community and for the religious and other community organizations that have done things for a hundred years or some even less. organizations that, uh, have done things for a hundred years, or some even less. Um, I, I, I struggled with this, but I, I think it's, you know, for me, it's the right thing to do at this particular time. I think 1,200 dollars for each event is a lot of money, uh, for some organizations that may be struggling. And, um, I, I, I would like to see that we would do something that would be a little more economically feasible to the businesses that we're working with and to the organizations. One of the things that the, the Hollister chamber shared with me is that they're gonna look at cutting back events if their city institutes a lot of, uh, these fees, and with the cutting back of events, with the number of, uh, community events they put on a year, which bring in a lot of money, that's less tax dollars to the city, and, um, you know, those, those things are important as, as far as a city's operation and budgeting as well. So I, you know, I believe in everybody paying their fair share, and, um, but I, I kinda think that, you know, 1,200 dollars is a lot of money for each individual, uh, event that has to be put on as far as a parade is concerned, and I would just like the council to consider maybe that we institute the application process and that we look at, um, perhaps if there's more than one event in a year that an organization is doing, that all, that application for the entire year is brought in and looked at, um, to, uh, make it a culmination rather than charging individually. And if, for, you know, by chance that the council decides that we need to move forward with the fees and the other areas, I certainly would like to encourage anybody out there to please come to our police department and put in your application for the vitals unit. Um, and, and you'll be contributing to this as well, rather than just to your organization. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. As the, um, as, uh, uh, the, people have mentioned up here that it is a starting point. It's not a concrete figure. And, you know, and I'm looking at the D E S guys, and you can call your celebration anything that you want, and we can find a term for anything, and we just had another group come up, and they have a religious celebration, and, and I don't know how many churches we have in this town, but they could call theirs a religious celebration of, of, uh, of, of any kind. And what I don't wanna get into is, is some kind of property right, because one function is going on, and that means a new one can't be added. Because I'd be just as wrong, and I wouldn't be representing everyone who's out there and in the community, and I don't think anyone else would, up here. A mention was, uh, made by, uh, by Mr. Amorrell about the school district not paying. We have an, an M O U, uh, memorandum of understanding, that it's a joint use agreement. Uh, they help us out, we help them out. And so that, that's what that kinda falls under. Uh, and, and that memorandum of understanding has worked out well, so we could, we could help, and we could help the schoolchildren too. And, uh, and, and if we need a facility, that's, it's kind of, it's kind of going both ways. And, and that's something that's, that's been worked out with the schools, uh, and it's been signed into agreement. The, the idea of, of consolidating the events, um, I can tell you that, that our chief has been wonderful that way, because we had one group who came with 12 events, and all of them had alcohol. And so there was a separate fee for each time this group had an alcoholic, I don't wanna say alcoholic event, oh, God, an event with spirits. And instead of charging for each individual use or to review, he reviewed all 12 events, 10 or 12 events, and one fee was charged. So saved the, the organization a tremendous amount of money. Now, I can see, I think Mrs. Lewis brings up a good point, that if something doesn't change and, uh, we don't have to put the staff time into it, uh, there's, I, I think there's a, the great possibility that this council could, uh, could, could work and, and see what staff thinks after about, uh, about taking events and consolidating them if they don't change, if they have numerous events. Um, or events year after year if something didn't change. I, I think maybe there's a possibility, depending upon what the council thinks, that there's a, a way to give and take a little bit. The, I see the difference between the processions and the parades, and which one costs more and why it costs more. So I think with that, and I've made a few comments, but I, I wanna hear anyone else. I see Mrs. Stone Grove and Mr. Silveira both have their lights on. So, Mrs. Silveira, you're first. I'm gonna let you go.
I, yeah, a couple of questions. It is, I don't know if the city attorneys is, can or is, has the ability to answer the expressive religious cultural activity. If you could give me more clarification on that.
Yes.
Actually, there's an exemption in the ordinance for expressive activity as long as it's not blocking traffic and as long as it's obeying all of the traffic laws. So you could have a procession theoretically down a sidewalk as long as you were, uh, dealing with all of the traffic laws, um, so on and so forth. It's when that activity creates, uh, a closure of a park or a closure of a street, that's, that's when you get into the permitting process. And we've tried to cut some, into some exemptions to protect expressive activity in terms of, um, things that are spontaneous, which is very typical in these types of ordinances, but the fact that you're, have an expressive activity doesn't give you carte blanche to have a parade down the middle of a street without a permit. And so, um, it is expressive activity, it's recognized as expressive activity, and we're not trying to quell any expressive activity, just that when you're using public property that's costing the public money, or you're closing down a street, you're gonna need a permit. And if you have a expressive activity that's gonna draw 5,000 people, you need to have a permit so the city can review what's going on. So there are some exemptions for expressive activities, especially in the area of spontaneous, uh, gathering because of a current event, like we've been seeing lately all around the country. Um, there's also an exemption for expressive activity where you're not closing down a street, doing something like that, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then, the next thing is, is if I could ask, Chief Brizzy had mentioned that he would love to speak to a few of the items, and I would love to hear from him on that, and I'll have some questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and everyone in attendance tonight. Thank you for all your comments. Um, it is a very difficult task that we have, trying to balance the needs of the departments that we all run efficiently and the needs of the public. Um, I'm glad Ed came up and contacted some other jurisdictions and determined that, I don't wanna say it's fuzzy math, but it's hard to pinpoint an answer for some of these agencies to do these things, police agencies specifically, because it is, it's not easy. Um, there's a lot of variables that come into play, and what I wanted to talk to everyone about was the idea of how this all goes down. So we can come up here and talk about all the different parades that go on and say, can there be a flat fee? Of course there can. There can be a flat fee, we can set a price forward if every parade went down the same path every time. That's one way we can accomplish that. Um, some of the variables that even play into those situations are, uh, we have vital volunteers, we discussed this at the last meeting. If we can use volunteers, I would love to decrease the price. And I'm gonna give you two examples. We had our last meeting a few nights ago, and we said, hey, we have an event coming up on a Saturday, who's available? We had one, maybe two people raise their hands. And then we said, we have another event coming up, the Veterans Parade, um, on November 7th. Start lining up at 9, it starts at 11, I'll give Cassandra a, a little prop for that. Um, we had seven or eight people raise their hands. So that's one of the variables that we play with. I'd love to use the volunteers all of the time to reduce that cost, but they're volunteers. So that's tough. Um, the other variable is, we don't know what the route is. Um, there's been a number of parades in the last couple of years alone that have changed their route. And so for us to be able to put a set number on that parade, and I know some are typical, and I know some parades have been the same for years, I understand that. Um, but it's very difficult until I see the application and what the parade route is, to put a price tag on it. I'll give you another variable. If there is a parade where I can assist, or any of the other F L S A exempt employees can assist, if I can force the commanders, our police services manager to come out and work that parade, which we do often, um, we cut the price down. There's four people there by themselves. So when we talk about having the ability to come in and say, it should be easy to set a price, you're right, it should be easy. But man, I'm telling you, it's one of the hardest things that we do, because I'm trying to balance the idea of these parades and processions that go on, uh, because my children are in many of them, I enjoy going to them, with the idea that we've gotta be responsible in our responsive, we have to be responsible to our task of, uh, making sure that we're spending tax dollars efficiently. So there's a lot of different things that go on, and it's really easy to say it's easy, but it's not. So, like the mayor mentioned, the city manager has mentioned, I would love to sit down with anyone who is interested to say, this is my map, this is what we plan to do, um, whether it's a road closure involved, it's a procession where there's just two cops involved, and I could go on for half an hour about all the different events that we work and how the prices are different, because each event is just a little bit different. Uh, Valley Crisis has a, a march coming up next month, and they, to reduce the price for their event, they walk down the side of the street on the sidewalk. They're not required to get a special event permit, they're not required to get insurance. We all meet at the park, we all walk over the overpass, uh, everyone's got signs, everyone's got balloons, we try to stick to the right side of the road, we're on the sidewalk, and we're able to accomplish that at a lesser cost. But it's just as, as successful. So I'll close with that. If anyone has any comments, I would love to answer them after the meeting, uh, talk to you all night long if we need to, to get this, to get this answered, so.
Chief, before you, before you leave, you know, you mentioned the volunteers. A volunteer is worth 200 bucks. If they're trained by our police department, they're worth 200 dollars. How long is the training, Chief?
The training's not very long at all, to be, uh, quite honest. It's a liability issue from my standpoint, uh, getting people on our insurance, getting them recognized by the city as a legitimate volunteer. There is some training that goes on, we have monthly meetings, um, we're gonna have a meeting next month, I believe it is, and we're gonna talk about road closures, we're gonna talk about barricades, we're gonna talk about how do we do some of these parade issues that we do. And it's just one of the ongoing, last, two months ago, we talked about radio etiquette, and how do you talk on the radio when you're a volunteer? Defensive driving, we do all those things. So the training process, um, isn't the most difficult. My primary concern is to make sure that you are, um, the type of volunteer that the community would want, have serving as a volunteer, and that we make sure that we cover you with insurance and liability reasons.
Okay.
Did I cover everything okay?
Yeah, I, great job. I mean, Mr. Silveira, do you have more questions?
Yeah, one question, Chief.
Okay, go ahead. Hang on. All right.
So, did the groups come in and sit with you, the price that you'll be giving them is the price based on worst-case scenario? Because obviously if they came and sat down with you now for an event that's taking place next year, you don't know whether you're gonna have, how many volunteers you would have with that.
That, that's actually a very, uh, that's a very good point. We could have, uh, four volunteers sign up for an event two weeks from now, and then two days from the event occurring, all four of them cancel for personal reasons. So, um, there's just a number of variables. The longer that we push out the, the get-together, I'm gonna give you solid numbers based on overtime rates and some of the, um, agreements that we have with people, and then we always work backwards. What we're talking about with the 50 dollars an hour is primarily for a road closure. We talk about, uh, an officer per block on a parade. It's more of a road closure, May Day Fair, Veterans Parade, Christmas Parade, when we're talking about a procession of the D E S Hall or some of the other groups where M L K, Caesar Chavez, where there's a group of people walking down the street, and there isn't bystanders cheering people on, and it's, this is more of a, a gathering of the, the people that are actually walking. We can do that far less, because we don't have the road closures, we don't have the, the overwhelming commitment for the public safety. We can do that with two or three people. We do that very often. And if we can do it with a volunteer, I'm sorry to keep rambling, the price goes down.
And so then, that, that fee that's charged, is it, is, so I get, so if I come in and I'm having a, I'm having a procession, I come in, I'm gonna pay the 150 dollar admin fee, permit fee, when is that determined? If I come in a month before and I wanna pay my fee, you guys sit down, you come up with, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna need two guys, three guys, whatever it is, do they pay it then? Or is it on the day of, after the event, they get a bill and they pay it?
How we've done it thus far, is we do it after the event, we send an invoice out. That's the easiest way for us to do it, because there are all those variables that we've already talked about. Some days, one volunteer will sign up, and then six will show up. I'm like, hey, great, we'll utilize you guys instead. So there are a number of moving parts, and I wish I could, I could give a concrete answer. I can assure everyone in this room that we try really hard every day to make the events as, as popular and as good for every resident in this community as we can.
And I, and I don't think anybody doubts that you guys are trying to do that. I think that you guys do a phenomenal job at what you do. It's just, I guess it's just really difficult to come up with a number, because if I sit with you today and you're counting on, you know, you're gonna have to pay three offers, three officers, four hours each minimum of overtime, I'm looking at 600 bucks for, you know, a two-hour event, one-hour event, it doesn't matter, or if it's four-hour event, versus, and then the day of, if, you know, we did, we discussed this a month before, and then two weeks before you put the, put the word out, hey, we're gonna have this event here, and you get three volunteers show up, well, now that 600 goes down to zero. And then, on the day of, one of those volunteers doesn't show up, so now you gotta bring in officers, and that, so it's just, it's just really a, a moving number. And I guess, in the conversations that I had with a couple of the people that are interested in this item, is, is they get the, they get the, the, the fee, they get the, you know, they need to have the insurance, but for them, it was, it's coming up with that number. That's, it's that unknown is what scares them, because at the end of it, all of a sudden, they don't wanna get a bill in the mail for 3,000 dollars. And I'm not saying that it's gonna be that high, but I, I guess-
I agree with you.
That's the frustration. So I guess the starting point is, is to come up with that worst-case scenario number and let them see what that number's gonna be, you know?
And, and we've done that, actually. That, that's actually exactly what we did in the Veterans Parade. Um, we gave them a price based on what we thought it was gonna take to accomplish exactly what we went out and did. Um, at the end of the day, because of some of the maneuvering that we did with our staff and the volunteers, we cut the price almost in half. I think we actually cut it more than in half.
You cut it more than, more than half off, and it was a very minimal cost for that large parade.
Yeah.
And, and so-
I would tell you that, in that parade, we probably cut a little bit too much, because we're running up and down blocks trying to keep people out, because for whatever reason, people in cars don't like to listen to barricades. But that's our goal, and we're gonna give them a, a worst-case scenario based on the application and what the request is, and we're gonna work with them every minute of the day to try and get that cost down.
What kind, how many hours of training are we looking at, plus monthly meetings? What would you say offhand if, if people wanted to become vital volunteers? And they were cleared by you, and bear in mind, you have to go through a background check by the police department and be cleared by the chief of police. It's almost as hard as becoming a caretaker of an animal, to be honest. It's tough to be a, a, a foster parent to an animal, but now you've got to go through all lists too. So what we talking, what are we talking about, Chief?
Our, our monthly meetings are about an hour, hour and a half long. Uh, mixed in those meetings, there's training, um, we're actually formalizing the training a little bit better, and we have been in the last three months. Uh, it's a resource issue for us, and it has been, but we're getting that back on the ground. So I would say a year's training, um, and when we can pull off a Citizens Academy, we'll ask that all the volunteers attend that as well. But I would say on a yearly, I would say about 12 hours.
12 hours.
It's not, it's not an enormous commitment at all.
And 200 bucks a person?
My only, my only suggestion for those who wish to become a volunteer, there is a lot of work involved, there are a lot of, um, there's a process that we go through that costs money. I would just hate to see someone become a volunteer-
Yes.
-go to one event and say-
I mentioned that.
"I'll see you guys next year."
Yeah.
'Cause you're not gonna be around as a volunteer, because I-
Yeah.
... we need a commitment from you, a little bit more than once a year.
Yeah. Well, the chamber's easy, they just have a lot of events. And, and, you know, and, and the thing- and the things, and, you can, you know something, you've been talking about this, I've been pushing it, if you'll accept me, and I can pass a background check, I'll, I'd like to volunteer.
I would take everyone up there tomorrow, if you'd want.
Okay. I, consider me the person who'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Stacy a question, so--
Thank you, chief.
Stacy, Stacy, when they come in and they, a person comes in and submits their application, and then you submit it around all, all the different groups that need to look at it, at that point, when it comes back, they will, they will, they'll know what, what the police department's roughly gonna charge them, they'll know all that. And then, is at that point, will they pay the $150 fee?
Wait, 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 Stacy, sorry. There you go.
According to the ordinance, it's only when the permit is ready to be issued.
Okay.
So, the fee needs to be paid prior to issuance of the permit, and if the applicant decides, you know, that's too much for us, after routing their application and going through the process, then, then they wouldn't pay for the service charge, obviously.
And to me, that may, you know, for this first year, if this deal passes through, the first year, I'm, I'm glad that it's that way, because they're gonna have an opportunity to get it looked at, and see what they're looking at, and, and, for, you know, for some reason, if they can't go through with it, then I would hate to, you know, charge them $150 fee for something they're not gonna be able to follow up with.
Exactly. So, Gary's even offering a preliminary discussion before the application comes to staff. So, before you pay the $150, Gary would like to sit down with your organization.
Okay. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to say, I appreciate all of the comments made at the public hearing earlier this evening at the public forum, from all the members of our community who put on these events. They definitely add culture to Los Banas, and bring a sense of community. They're all great, wonderful events. But I also wanna reemphasize some of the comments made earlier about, we are operating under cost recovery basis solely, and if the applicants of the events don't pay for the event to be held, that cost doesn't just disappear. The taxpayers pay for that. So, again, we're not in a business to make money, we just wanna make sure that the events pay for themselves. I have a question for the police chief, I guess. In regards to processions only, can they be led by a vital volunteer, if there's one available, or do they have to be led by a sworn officer?
That's a good question. We have two vital vehicles, and they serve as procession leaders, and they, they trail the procession as well. So, currently, if we have vital volunteers available for an event like a procession, we use them all the time, as often as we can.
Okay. So, is it conceivable for an event, a procession specifically, they'll have to pay their $150 permit fee, if there are volunteers available, and they're not blocking off any streets at that event, and I understand this could not always be like this, but that it could be $150 for their event?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You should drive the car?
No.
Oh. All right. Any other comments from council members? Scott?
So, I would like to encourage those groups to, you know, I, I look at some of these processions that have been going on for many years, and, and I don't see, I attend them, I go to them, and I don't see them going away. They're not gonna go away because of a fee that the city imposes, but that doesn't give the city the right to just charge some astronomical fee. So, I'm confident that Chief Breezy's gonna do the best possible that he can by the groups, and, believe me, if, if it's unfair, I'm gonna hear about it, and I would expect to hear about it. So, I, I just, you know, I, I encourage that. I wanna see these, these events that have been going on as long as I've been alive, I've been attending them, I wanna, I wanna see them continue to go on. So, and I would encourage the leaders of those groups to make it a point to come in and sit down with Chief Breezy, and get what the worst-case scenario fee is gonna be, and, and then we'll, we'll move forward from there, you know. I don't think it's as bad as everybody's thinking, and I, again, I said it earlier, I know that one of the biggest issues is, is that it's the unknown. That's what the groups are most concerned about, is the unknown, and I think that we could, to the best of our ability today, answer that unknown by meeting with Chief Breezy ahead of time. So, if there's no further--
I have one more question.
Go for it.
Okay. And Mrs. Lewis, you have a question, too?
I have one.
Okay. Stacy, is it possible, if things are gonna stay status quo on maybe a, a route, a procession, a, an event, where everything is gonna be the same, and they're not getting, there aren't going to be any variables, is it possible to, to work with the fee a little bit?
Might.
Yeah. Okay. Might answer that?
Yeah, I think we already answered that.
Well, since the city manager said--
Yeah.
Since the city manager said it's the minimum right now?
Yeah.
So, as the city manager said, it is the minimum right now, that, the first year or so, it will take longer than an hour, it will take longer than 15 minutes for each of the departments. That is that best-case scenario, and that's at a very minimum. What community and economic development do, we do analyze thoroughly, and it does take quite a bit of time. So, even just an hour is, is minimal cost, you know, minimal time, and 15 minutes, that's me asking a lot of the departments, and those are department heads, to, to be looking at the permit in just 15 minutes. I mean, at a staff level, we could discuss whether if it's a street fair, and it's, it's in the fall, it's in the spring, it's the same street fair--
Yeah.
--possibly, but--
Okay.
--when it comes to an organization having multiple different events, I'm gonna be, I know I'm going to be spending more time, I know each of the departments are gonna be analyzing each of the events.
You've, you've answered my question.
Okay.
If you talk about, it's just like when the chief approved 12 liquor permits in one swell swoop, instead of fell swoop, instead of making them pay individual fees, you've answered my question. If we look at two street fairs, and if we can consolidate something into one, if something doesn't change, I think you've answered my question, and I'm very pleased with that answer. And, and if, if someone's gonna have multiple events that are similar events, then maybe that, that's the way we can possibly consider something. And, and so, I'm, I'm good with that, and then we can have a check and balance later on, to, to bring this up to date, to see how this is going, maybe a six- or seven-month report, to see how this is going, and, and see how the, the individual groups feel. So, DES, you've got your marching orders, so to speak. And, and so, I, I think, and, and the other religious group, the other, Mr. Barba, is Mr. Barba spoke? Yeah. And, and so, so you've got, you've got ideas of how to reduce the cost down to, I can't take another comment, okay? All right, thank you.
Stand for me.
Oh, okay. You have to stand for me, thank you. Okay. And, and so, we wanna get these costs down. The chief has outlined how to get these costs down. Chamber, we're expecting you, we're expecting the DES, Mr. Barba, any group that's out there, you meet with the chief, find out how you can reduce these costs, and I'm gonna encourage everyone, and I'm gonna tell you, all the, the organizations, go back and get one or two volunteers that you feel would be good vital volunteers to be trained, but not one that's gonna work one event and only your event. Because, we can reduce these costs. You heard the chief, he made the comment, everyone up here feels the same way that I, I can think of, of how to save you money. So, I'm gonna leave it in your hands, and we can take care of this, maybe to reduce these costs, where it's just minimal, just to cover our costs. Okay. All right. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I, I wanna thank Chief Breezy for coming to the podium and clarifying some things. And, and I know that if processions decide to use the public sidewalk to walk on, that it's not, it's gonna cost you basically just the permit process, but then I also know some processions are not gonna walk on the sidewalk, because that's traditionally not what they do. So, with that in mind, you know, personally, I would be in favor of the application process alone, for the, for this first year, to see how things go, because we do, the city has to recover costs, and not give away public funds to do business with organizations that are not a part of the city. So, you know, it's, it's a real tough position to be in, and, you know, I will just reiterate what the mayor has indicated, please, anyone that you know that would qualify as a vital, and, and again, not to just work your event, but to be a helper within our city, to help other organizations reduce the cost of their event. It's working to make it all successful, not just your event alone. And, I'm just hoping that this will work out for all of us in the city. And I agree with the mayor, that we need to look at this possibly in six months, and maybe in a year, to see how it's working out with the fees, to keep these organizations going, to keep the sense of community, and to keep the sense of culture going, because that's what America is all about. You know, we have many cultures within our communities, and within our different cities, and we certainly don't want people to feel like they have to give up their identity, because it costs too much money to do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just got another vital volunteer, Eric Lamone.
[laughing]
I'm serious about this, please. Find out how to volunteer. 12 hours a year isn't gonna kill ya. All right. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further comments, I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of, hold on a second, it's a two-parter here, ordinance number 1134, as read by title.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1134. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Silveira?
I need to ask for opposed.
Move for the adoption.
You need to ask for opposed.
Ask for ayes.
Oh, any opposed? No, okay. All right, motion carried.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would now like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1134, as read by title.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned by Silveira, second by Stonegrove, to adopt ordinance number 1134. Director Maloney, roll call?
Freya?
Lewis.
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
So, Walter?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Let's go on to item number two, City Council Resolution Number 5697, establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of special events. And again, just a little side note, you are to meet with the, the chief on every event, to get an estimate based on volunteerism or no volunteerism. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5697, as read by title.
Okay, would you read the whole?
Okay. Establishing the permit fees for the administration issuance of special events.
Thank you. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5697, establishing permit fees for the administration issuance of special events. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. All right, it's, we've been at this for two hours, I think we deserve a break.
Real quick.
Oh, something else?
Just in, in order of expediency, is there a way that we could skip to item D, so that we can, Mr. Freya can come back into the meeting, and we can keep progressing on after the--
You know, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we'd have to, you make a run, make a motion?
Well, as, as, I mean, we're going to, I'll make the motion to table item D's public hearing--
Well, why don't you make a motion to move item D up to where B should be, and, and then we'll, we'll take that action.
Okay.
Okay?
So first, I'll make the motion to move item D to the place of item B.
Okay. And do I have a second? Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove, to move item D up to item B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I'd like to make a motion that the new, that item D, the receive public comment and consideration of adopting proposed ordinance for regulation of farmer's markets located in Title IX and Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code, be tabled to the October 7th council meeting.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
And, and just if I can give a quick explanation of that, is, is, the city manager, the city attorney, are going to meet with the ag commissioner, and become a little bit more familiar, and educate themselves on farmer's markets, so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. And so, I don't, I wanna come up with the right decision, not a rushed decision, so if we could table that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Actually, if there's anyone here that--
I'm gonna open a public hearing. I wanna talk about that.
Before?
Yeah, before you don't say it. Yeah. Okay. What I am going to do, and I would like to open the public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation of a farmer's market located in Title IX and Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. And this is just opening the public hearing. We will continue the public hearing, and to, would you add at the end of that, too, to continue the public hearing, if that's okay? If anyone would like to speak on this now, they can, but it's not your final say, and you, and on October 7th, we're gonna continue that public hearing and open it up again. So, if anyone would like to speak on the formerly item D, now the new B, would you please come forward? After that, long with it, thank you. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And Silveira, would you add that one piece?
Yes, if I could table item D to the October the 7th meeting, as well as the public hearing.
Okay. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Silveira, second by Mrs. Stonegrove, to continue formerly the item D, public hearing on the farmer's market, now the new B, and to continue the public hearing to October 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Okay? We're gonna take a 10-minute break or so.
Okay, we took a little bit longer than ten minutes, but we're back. Okay? Why don't we go on to, uh, let's see here. We are at public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for the regulation of block parties located in Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. B, well, it's actually, it would be the new C. C one and two, and it is... Yeah, okay. Ordinance number 1136, adding Article forty-three, Chapter III to Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to residential neighborhood block parties. Item two, City Council Resolution number five six nine eight, establishing permit fees for the administration issuance of residential neighborhood block parties. And let's go to, uh, Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So, a background on this particular ordinance, we did, once again, we discussed this back on September second, but currently there is no uniform process to review proposed residential neighborhood block parties. It does require temporary closure of residential neighborhood streets. Uh, and what our proposed ordinance, uh, includes, it defines what a block party is. It establishes then if you are a block party, then you must obtain a block party permit. It creates a application submitted timeline, so it's not less than twenty-one days and no more than ninety days before the event. It has regulations and conditions of approval within. It has requirement, uh, that the applicant sign an indemnity agreement because it is on public property. The event must also obtain liability insurance. And then, in the event that the, um, applicant disagrees with the decision of the Community and Economic Development Department, uh, they do have the opportunity to appeal to the Planning Commission. The application processing fee, uh, that staff is proposing, once again, it is, it's still a hundred and fifty dollars. This is a minimal fee, uh, for, to review the application, to analyze the site in accordance with our ordinance, to route the application to our Public Works Department, our Public Safety Departments, which are Police and Fire, and then those departments to provide comments to the Community and Economic Development Department, and then for the department to issue or deny the permit. So with that, I kept it pretty short and brief because we did discuss that link by, um, September second. Um, but with that, I'm, uh, asking that the City Council adopt ordinance number eleven thirty-six, adding Article forty-three of Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to block parties. And then adopt resolution number fifty-six ninety-eight, establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of residential neighborhood block party permits. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. And before we, uh, we go to, uh, questions and then the public hearing, I just wanted everyone to know that Mr. Furia, nine seventeen, joined us again for this item, and he will be here for the remainder of the meeting. Okay? So, uh, if we could, um, yeah, if we could, uh, do I have any questions from council at this time? All right? What I'd like to do now is open up the public hearing on ordinance number one one three six and City Council Resolution number five six nine eight, uh, as read by title. Is there anyone who would like to speak on those?
Um, Kathy Ballard, resident of the Los Banas. I'm gonna stop talking for my, my customers and neighbors and everything else, 'cause I seem to get beat up a lot. But I have a question that was brought up by one of my neighbors who was planning on having a block party, um, contacted her insurance company, and I know that you have to have a million dollars, and the city of Los Banas has to be named as additional insured. Um, their insurance company refused to do it because she wasn't the sole perper, person who was giving the party, it was a whole block, um, that they could do a certificate of insurance showing that they were insured, but to list the city of Los Banas as an additional insured because there was no control by one sole pers- person, they denied being able to do that. It's a problem. Um, I just wanna know, um, how they might solve it in regards to what the city means and what a neighborhood person can do. Um, the reason I ask that is because she said, "Well, if I can't get an additional insured, I'm just gonna have it, put a car at my, end of my street, and have the party and hope the police department doesn't patrol that, that day." So it's just a question that was brought up, and so I am now bringing it to you since this is something they need an answer to.
Okay. We're gonna have Mr. Vaughn for an answer, ask Mr. Vaughn for an answer.
First of all, this is a requirement of our insurance, that anyone, uh, having an activity on a public street have insurance in the limit amount that's in, set forth in the ordinance and that the city be named as an additional insured. What your neighbor friend was probably doing is trying to tag it on to her homeowner's insurance, and they were probably a little trickier. There are block party special one-day insurance policies for probably less than a hundred dollars she could obtain and meet all of the requirements of the ordinance. Uh, there's really no, there's no ability of the city to undo that requirement. That's a requirement of our insurance. If we don't require that of the, um, person giving the block party, our insurance will not cover us if there's some, some liability that happens during the block party.
Kathy, the RMA, risk management, and risk management are the ones that insure us based on, uh, on, on, on factors, uh, and, and procedures that we present. So, uh, we'll lose our insurance.
Well, I'll just let him, I just didn't know where...
Come, come to the microphone, please. You still have a minute. Yeah.
I just didn't know where to send her, 'cause she did go to her homeowner carrier, and they denied it because, and I can explain, you know, why they did it.
Now you have an answer.
I understand it.
Okay.
Because you have ten people, and is it all your liability? No. So you have to get a policy, from what I understand, probably that, as an applicant of all ten residents that are doing it, um, and get the one-day insurance.
Okay.
Which I totally, and I know the city has to be covered. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to help them be able to do things legally.
And you did.
That's what I want, that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Good night. Thank you. All right. Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and council members, you have any questions? Or recommendations, or, uh, motions? Mrs. Stonegrove.
I would move to waive the second reading of ordinance number one one three six, adding Article forty-three, Chapter III, Title, to Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to residential neighborhood block parties.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by, um, Stonegrove, second by Lewis, ordinance, to approve ordinance, or no, yes, to, uh, waive the second reading of ordinance number one one three six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Stonegrove?
I would move to adopt ordinance number one one three six as read.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt ordinance number one one three six, motion by Stonegrove, second by Lewis. Roll call vote, please.
Furia?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Motion carried. Mrs. Stonegrove?
And I have just a question about this res, is this resolution number five six nine eight, establishing the permit fees? 'Cause I have the old. Okay. I move to adopt City Council Resolution number five six nine eight, establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of residential neighborhood block parties.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Stonegrove, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution number five six nine eight, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to the new D, and that is, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation for zoning code appeals located in Title IX, Chapter III, the Los Banas Municipal Code. Uh, ordinance number one one three seven, uh, adopting revisions to the zoning code, standardizing the appeals process by amending Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. Uh, let's go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Um, so tonight, to give you some background on our zoning code standardized, um, appeals process, how we got to this point, um, back in two thousand and ten, the city did adopt a comprehensive zoning code update. Um, but at that time, we did not address a consistent uniform procedure for appeals. So in various parts of the code, the Community and Economic Development Director, um, would make the decisions and either could appeal up to the city manager or to the Planning Commission. It wasn't very consistent. Um, so, going through this process of, uh, housekeeping and updating our zoning code ordinances, uh, we discovered that some articles have separate or different appeal processes, and we needed a standard, standardized procedure for that. So we presented this proposed ordinance to the Planning Commission, and they reviewed it on August twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, uh, with a recommendation of approval to the City Council on this proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance, uh, does provide for a standardized appeal process through the zoning code and sets forth that any dissatisfied person with the Community and Economic Development Director's decision or the Planning Commission can file a writ notice within ten days of the decision, um, to the city clerk. And if it is a decision of the Community and Economic Development Director, uh, they, the Planning Commission would be the appellate body, and then if it's a decision of the Planning Commission, the City Council would be the appellate body, um, for any of those decisions and the final making body. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt ordinance number eleven thirty-seven, adopting revisions to the zoning code, standardizing the appeals process. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. All right. We are now at the stage of, is there anyone at the City Council who would like to ask a question at this time? Before I open up the public hearing. All right? Let's go to the public hearing, and to receive public comment, consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation of zoning appeals, uh, zoning code appeals located in Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code, ordinance number one one three seven, as read by title. Is there anyone who would like to speak on that item? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and council, any questions, recommendations? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, if there are no other questions of council members, I'd like to, um, make a recommendation that ordinance number eleven thirty-seven, adopting, uh, revisions to the zoning code, standardizing the appeal process by amending Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code, um, to, um, waive the second reading.
Okay. Do I have a, a second? Mr. Silvera?
I'll second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Silvera, uh, to waive the second reading of ordinance number one one three seven, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for ordinance number eleven thirty-seven, uh, to be adopted as read by title.
Okay. Mr. Silvera?
Second.
Okay. Motion by, uh, Lewis, second by Silvera, to, uh, adopt, uh, ordinance number one one three seven, as read by title. Roll call vote, Director Maloney?
Furia?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now back to E, which is E. Okay? And let's go on to public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of amendments to the City Fire Prevention Code ordinance as it pertains to allowing for the exemption permit to be issued to an eligible organization for the purpose of sponsoring or continuing a Fourth of July fireworks display. Item E one, ordinance number one one three eight, amending, uh, number eleven, uh, amendment number eleven to the California Fire Code two thousand and thirteen, uh, edition, set forth in section four dash three dash, uh, four dash three point zero seven of the Los Banas Municipal Code. And this is a first reading and introduction, and let's go to Mr. Fajian. Oh, Chief Marison. All right? We'll go to him. Wait a minute. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, what you have before you tonight is an ordinance that amends our existing amendment to the fire code. Back in two thousand and five, ordinance number ten twenty-five established that we could, um, set an ordinance to sell, possess, and discharge safe and sane fireworks in the city of Los Banas. When that ordinance came into effect ten years ago, we established a mechanism to where we could issue permits for, uh, local nonprofit organizations to sell permits out of their booths. There was also a permit that was set aside specifically for the Chamber of Commerce that they would be able to use that permit specifically to raise money for a public fireworks display annually. That worked very well up until last year, where the Chamber decided that, uh, it was not financially feasible for them to continue that practice. So, coming back, speaking to the city manager and some city council members, we would like to bring this ordinance before you so that we can, once again, entertain the fact that if a nonprofit organization approaches us and asks to do the, basically, the same exact thing that the Chamber of Commerce was proposing, that we would have the ability to enter into an MOU and issue them that one variance permit, so that, um, we could once again enjoy another public works, our, uh, public display of aerial fireworks in the city of Los Banas. So the idea is that, um, we have already been approached by a group of, of citizens that represent a number of different organizations in the city. Uh, if this is successful and passing, then we will enter into a memorandum of understanding or an agree, agreement with that group for probably a three-year period, depending on, um, you know, how the city manager would like to proceed forward with guidance from our legal counsel. So I would be happy to answer any questions, but that's the short version of what we're trying to do, is basically take the Chamber of Commerce name off this permit and be able to, uh, negotiate with future nonprofit organizations to provide this service to the city.
Okay. Ms. Kerrigan?
Chief, can you explain, uh, just so that when we go through this process of selecting the seven booths plus one, we were at six plus one, but we're going to seven booths plus one, and I know it's really simple, but can you explain it for everybody so that they won't be confused next time around?
Yeah. The existing ordinance says that we can issue one fireworks booth permit per five thousand population. So we had all, all, we had always issued seven, which was six plus one. Well, in the meantime, our population grew to where we're over thirty-five thousand. So when the Chamber withdrew their ability to take that permit, I decided at that time that our population justified seven booths, so I would just leave it at seven booths. Uh, the ordinance gives me the authorization to do that. So now that we're at thirty-five, that says seven booths plus this one exempt, so that will take us to eight booths, um, which is one more than we've ever had.
Okay? All right. Um, are there any questions for, um, Chief Marison? Right? Yes. Go ahead.
I was trying to get to that ordinance right quickly. I, I just, let's see, I just had a question on, um, I'm sorry, just give me a second here.
Since you're flipping through pages, I won't call it a senior moment.
It is.
Okay.
Well, let me see if I could pull it from my memory, Chief, 'cause I'm, uh, I was doing some other stuff and I didn't turn to that page properly. Uh, there was a section in there that referred to, um, one of them referred to you having the discretion on the permit, and then on another portion, it said that the city manager had the discretion of, uh, giving out the permit, so...
I think what that was referring to is that the current ordinance states that the organization, the nonprofit that's applying for the permit must be in place for two years prior to the application. And what that does is it prevents somebody from just throwing together a nonprofit organization coming down a month later, applying for a fireworks booth and, and selling. Uh, what gives the city manager the authorization to do is when a nonprofit organization approaches us in an interest in getting that one exempt booth, then we have the ability to waive that, um, to, uh, enter into a MOU with the organization. And the reason we did that is frankly, um, none of the existing organizations have, came up, we're not gonna allow an existing organization like, let's say, um, Seroptimist to be exempt. This organization has to be organized just to raise money for the fireworks, the public fireworks display, so it is quite possibly gonna be an organization that is put together now. And so it wouldn't have the two years to be in existence prior to July.
So it doesn't mean that because they get that booth, that they're responsible for paying for all of the fireworks, uh?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. So they will be responsible to put on the whole show as well as having that exempt booth to pay towards the show?
Yeah, and that's been, we had a pretty intense discussion with the city manager and the individuals that are interested in doing this, is that, um, we will, through the MOU, uh, have ways of holding them to the fire, that if they're selling fireworks for this one purpose, then, um, you know, they're gonna have to follow through with that. If that, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah.
And they understand that there's gonna be other donations involved from the community or from other organizations in the community to make up the difference in a twelve-hundred-dollar a minute fireworks show. Uh, that's why the Chamber backed out, is because they couldn't sell enough to support the annual fireworks show, so he understands, or they understand as a group, that they're gonna have some other, um, funding that they have to come up with to complete this task.
Those were the two questions that I had. Thank you.
This is like selling chocolates, and then the money doesn't go to the organization where it intends, you know, and, and they can't keep the money.
Right.
Okay? So... Um, any other questions? Okay. Scott? Question?
So, then, um, it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that a group that has to be formed is, if there's a group out there that said, "Hey, we wanna take this on," and, and, um, Elks or, or Lions or whoever, if they wanna just take this on, they could still apply for this exempt permit?
They could apply for the exempt permit, but we will not allow them to apply for one of the other sevens at the same time.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't want somebody to get two permits.
Gotcha.
One organization to get two permits.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be a organization that was just put together to put on the fireworks show? If there is a group that so felt that they could take it on, they could do that?
Yeah, but they wouldn't be eligible for another permit.
Exactly. And then, and then, that's, that'll be handled by you and the city manager?
Yes.
That group that comes forward?
We'll evaluate them, um, come up with an MOU that works for everyone involved, and then proceed with issuing them the permit at our discretion.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, motions? Motions? Yeah, we had the public hearing. I think we did, yes? Okay.
No.
Nope, we didn't?
No, we didn't.
We had the public hearing?
Nope.
I missed, oh, that's right, you asked a question. Okay. Let's go, uh, I'll be darned. All right. Let's go to the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of amendments to the City Fire Prevention Code ordinance as it pertains to allowing an exempt permit to be issued to an eligible organization for the purpose of sponsoring or continuing to a Fourth of July fireworks display. Ordinance number one one three eight, amending, uh, number eleven to the, uh, California Fire Code two thousand and thirteen addition, set forth in section four dash three point zero seven of the Los Banas Municipal Code. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Kathy Ballard, resident of this podium. Um, I just wanna make, um, a comment in regards to the amount of booths that you have. Um, I would suggest if it's one for five thousand and we have thirty-five thousand, you should leave it at six plus one, so they all have a better chance of raising the funds that is needed to put on the firework booth. Because you only have so many residents buying it. And if you go to eight, it just means less for each booth, and so they don't have as good a chance of making that twenty-six thousand dollars that they're gonna need. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we'll now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and, Mrs. Stonegrove?
Um, if there's no further discussion, I would move to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one three eight, amending amendment number eleven to the California Fire Code two thousand and thirteen addition, set forth in section four dash three point zero seven of the Los Banas Municipal Code.
Okay. Mrs. Silvera?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Stonegrove, second by Silvera. Um, I will tell you that, uh, the request that you made, uh, it's kinda too late for this year, because, uh, because what's happening is that all notices have gone out, and I think, have we selected everybody yet?
No, we select at the end of this month.
End of this month?
Yeah.
But...
But we did not make any changes to the ordinance...
Right.
...regulating the amount of permits. That's something that was adopted ten years ago.
Yes.
So that's remaining the same.
Yeah.
That isn't changed, it's just that our population has grown, so it justified an extra permit.
Right. And, and what we've done is that's something way in advance the council could consider, but I think with less than a month, uh, with, with, with what's happening, I think that's kinda short notice to probably cut somebody off.
I was just looking at eight checks by thousands, forty thousand.
Okay. Yeah. And we got, okay. Thank you. Thank you. But thank you for the comment, and I just wanted to kinda give you an explanation that it's kinda too late to cut 'em off. Okay. Motioned by Stonegrove, second by Silvera, to approve City Council Resolution number five, uh, seven, fifty-seven hundred. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
We...
We...
Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance number, oh, God, I'm, I'm just, I apologize. I apologize. Ordinance number one one three eight, and it's been motioned by Stonegrove, second by Silvera, to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Stonegrove?
I move to introduce ordinance number one one three eight as read by title.
Mr. Silvera?
Second.
Motion by Stonegrove, second by Silvera, for the introduction of ordinance number one one three eight. Uh, roll call?
Furia?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. All, uh, motion carried. Okay? Let's go on to item F, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit to allow the use of a type forty-one alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating establishment, J and N Restaurant, located at nine thirty-three Sixth Street, Suite B, APN zero-two-five dash two-four-one dash zero-one-three. And at this time, I'm going to ask, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Furia to now take the... to now take the center seat, because I have a conflict, I have property within 500 feet, and so I will need to excuse myself.
Thanks for letting me know.
Oh, you're welcome.
He was supposed to.
All right, we are at item F. So, item F, to receive public comment in consideration of a conditional use permit to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating establishment, J&amp;N Restaurant, located at 933 Sixth Street, Suite B, APN 025 dash 241 dash 013. And we will go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Furia. So, uh, J&amp;N Restaurant, its conditional use permit number 2015 dash 09. Uh, their proposal is for a type 41 alcohol license. This would be for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating establishment. They're proposing an establishment, um, that sells American and Mexican food. The location is at 933 Sixth Street, Suite B, and it is highlighted for in yellow, but it's pointed out for you with that arrow in red in the downtown area. According to CECLA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility and no expansion or any other environmentally significance would happen on this, um, piece of property. It is within census tract 22.01, and currently there are eight on-sale licenses within this census tract. Uh, according to the municipal code, there are general criteria that a conditional use permit must be able to meet, and the city council must make those findings prior to approving, uh, the conditional use permit. So the first finding is that, uh, the proposed use in project is consistent with the City of Los Banas' general plan and our municipal code. And the evidence for this finding is that the site is designated mixed-use, and it is zoned mixed-use, and commercial uses, uh, are included within that particular zoning district which restaurant establishments with alcohol are permitted. And two, uh, that the proposed use of project will not be a nuisance or detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And the finding that we're asking the city council to make here is that the proposed use will be conducted within a, an established downtown business district and will not result in significant operational changes to the existing commercial area. And the area's function and character is mixed-use, which includes commercial restaurants that do serve alcohol. And then the third general finding is that the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses, properties, and neighborhoods, and will not be detrimental or interest to property improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city. And the finding that staff is asking the city council make here is that the proposed use will be conducted within the downtown business district and will not result in significant operational changes to the existing commercial area. So then the municipal code goes on to state that if the conditional use permit is for alcoholic beverages, there are specific findings, and there's four findings that the council must make in, in that specific instance. One, that the proposal will not contribute to undue proliferation of such uses in an area where additional ones would be undesirable with consideration given to the area's function and character, problems of crime and loitering, and traffic problems, and capacity. And the finding that staff is asking that the city council make here is that, um, as stated within your staff report, the number of on-sale licenses in this census tract is currently eight. And the addition of one more license will not contribute to the proliferation of alcohol sales as the on-sale of beer and wine will be in conjunction with food. Uh, this census tract is not overly concentrated with, uh, on-sale beer and wine alcohol licenses. It's a fairly large census tract that does encompass the entire downtown district as well as the northern section of, uh, the Pacheco Corridor from, um, really Mercy Springs all the way down to Badger Flat Road. And then two, that the proposal will not adversely affect adjacent or nearby churches, temples, or synagogues, public parochial or private elementary, junior high, or high schools, public parks or recreation centers, or public or parochial playgrounds. And the finding that staff is asking the city council make here is that there are no such types of uses in the immediate area. The closest school is approximately 650 feet away, which is West Side Elementary, and the nearest church is approximately 400 feet north of this project site. It's even further than that if you were to take the direct, um, travel, the route of travel to that particular, um, church site. Uh, essentially 400 feet would be me measuring directly from the building over across buildings to the church site. So, there are restaurants within the vicinity, um, as stated, with a type 41 license, which do operate harmoniously with the surrounding area, and we are asking that the city council consider the surrounding area and nearby uses and determine that there is no evidence of adverse impacts to adjacent or nearby churches, temples, or synagogues, nearby parks, recreation centers, or playgrounds. The third finding is that the proposal will not interfere with the movement of people along an important pedestrian street, and we're asking that the city council determine that the consumption of alcohol will only be allowed inside the premises, and the use will be regulated by the city, state, and federal regulations. And then the last finding is that where the proposed use is in close proximity to residential uses, and especially in bedroom windows, the use will be limited in hours of operation or designed operated so as to avoid the disruption of resident sleep between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And the evidence here is that the hours of operation would start after 7:00 AM, and they would end at 10:00 PM. The consumption of alcohol will not be allowed outside of the premises per the conditions of approval and also our city ordinance. The nearest residential window is located at least 100 feet away from the front entrance to the restaurant. And based upon these considerations, we're asking that the city council find that there is no evidence that the use will cause disruption of sleep. So this is, um, a photo of the front of the business. This is at 933 Sixth Street, Suite B. This was a former location of, uh, Pierre's, uh, the deli downtown. It's right next to the Office City and Unabella Salon. So the public comment, uh, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise and mailed out to the 300-foot radius on September 4th, 2015, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is, uh, asking that the city council adopt resolution number 5,700, approving conditional use permit number 2015 dash 09 for J&amp;N Restaurant. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Uh, we'll now move to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the council on this item, item F? Seeing no one, we'll move, close the public hearing, and if, uh, council has any commentary or, uh, motion, we'll entertain that at this, at this time. Mr. Silvera.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt city council resolution number 5,700, approving conditional use permit number 2015 dash 09 for the on-sale of beer and wine for J&amp;N Restaurant located at 933 Sixth Street, Suite B.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Silvera, and a second by Mrs. Stonegrove, to approve city council resolution number 5,700. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Furia. All right, we are at, um, number nine. Community and Economic Development Presentation, continued from September 2nd, 2015, city council meeting, and we will go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this presentation, I just want to, uh, be able to give the status to the city council of where the Community and Economic Development Department, what we've done so far this year, what we're working on, and what we're anticipating for in the future. Um, so a, a project that's happening in town that really has, it's not a city project, but it does show, uh, great progress for our community, is the courthouse project. It is a two-story structure on G Street, uh, which is west of Mercy Springs Road, and they are, uh, moving quite nicely in the construction process. This was the first day that, uh, the crane was out there, and they were, um, putting up the walls out on, um, the courthouse site. This particular, um, project does bring development to the area. Will have potential development with professional offices, um, as well as, uh, coffee shops and deli shops for the jurors. Um, and the city is anticipating, um, complete construction around the summer of 2016. So a very exciting project for the City of Los Banas. The next project, um, that we see going around, uh, happening right now in town is the junior high. Uh, the new junior high is located on Prairie Springs and Badger Flat Road, and it's anticipated that, uh, construction would be completed in August of 2016. And this is a photo of the, um, first two-story classroom that's been constructed so far. It is right off of Badger Flat Road, and also very exciting, uh, to see a new junior high on the south side of Pacheco Boulevard. And, um, that construction crew is, uh, working quite nicely. Uh, we have not received any issues from the neighborhood, but they have been, uh, notifying the neighbors as well as the city each time. Um, construction work is to happen early on in the morning hours, and, um, we have a, a nice relationship with the school district on this particular project. So another, um, project that I did want to mention for you, and really I do want to cover the good, the bad, the ugly. Um, the closure of Kmart is, um, something that's, uh, come out publicly recently, and, um, the City of Los Banas is anticipating that the store would close around November 15th, um, of this year. And we are currently working with the property owner, and we're trying to, um, help them secure access to the site from State Route 152. Uh, they're currently working with, uh, two tenants that they're hoping to occupy the existing Kmart, um, in order to occupy the empty building once Kmart vacates. But in order to secure those tenants, they've told the city that they would need to secure access off of 152. Now, we are trying to work with them, um, we've, uh, coordinated meetings with Caltrans. Uh, there are some obstacles though, uh, that we would like the public to know about. Um, there is a easement, the Union Pacific Railroad still owns an easement that runs on the frontage of that particular property off of, uh, 152, Pacheco Boulevard, as well as there's a Caltrans Corporation Yard, and, um, the intersection of Mercy Springs and 152 also being in close proximity. So it's all of these issues that we're trying to work with, um, and just working with the agencies of the Union Pacific Railroad as well as Caltrans, um, getting them all together. The city is really trying to, to be the middleman and, and, uh, coordinate all of these connections. But it, it, we are hopeful that we will be able to, um, secure access there at 152 in order to be able to secure, uh, new tenants for this location, and we're doing whatever we can in our power to help the property owners. So, future retail, I just wanted to hit, um, upon that. We've had some, uh, new site plans come before the planning commission in the last couple of months, um, one of which is the 99 Cent Store, and this would be on the southeast corner of Ortega Lita Road and Pacheco Boulevard. And this is the elevations here. And another future retail is the Prime Shine Car Wash. That would be, um, just east of H Street on Pacheco Boulevard. And, um, another, um, couple of projects that have recently just gone to the planning commission, I don't have elevations for you, is the Ekins Property. It's a 5,000-square-foot industrial building off of Commerce Way. And then, uh, we just did a design review last Wednesday with the, uh, planning commission for a sleep train mattress retailer, and that will be then going to the planning commission this next coming Wednesday for final site plan review approval. And then, Mi Barrio at 403 North Mercy Springs is, um, proposing an expansion of their store, essentially doubling their size. Uh, both very promising, um, promise, uh, projects, and do show that, uh, retail is starting to come back in Los Banas. We see a little bit of a trickle come through. Um, I also wanted to highlight our design review process for the city council. So that was an ordinance that did take effect, uh, about last year, and we're really seeing this year in 2015, these projects, um, go through this process and, and see how it unfolds from beginning to end. And, um, one of the highest compliments that our department received was from the owners of Prime Shine. He wrote an email, um, that he was actually kind of skeptical at the beginning of an additional process to go through this design review. But after going through it, just the positive feedback that he received, as well as, uh, the direction that he was given from the planning commission, helped his process, and he felt that that was immensely helpful. So, um, from being a skeptic, he is now a believer in our design review process. And I do, uh, actually receive a lot of positive feedback from the applicants, particularly the architects that are receiving this feedback early on in the project versus at the end, at a public hearing, when the planning commission is trying to redesign their project. That's all happening in a study session where there's open dialogue between the architect and the planning commission. So it's, uh, coming out to be a really, um, helpful process. The next project I wanted to highlight is the industrial park, and what the city is doing right now, um, in this project. So, I'd say daily, uh, myself and the city manager, we do spend, um, it's quite a bit of time each day on the industrial park. It's not quite evident that the public would see, but we are working on this in the background. Um, so just to let the public know that this project is still one of our number one priorities, and we do work on this every day. Where we're at right now in the status of our industrial park is we are working with a planning firm on designing a conceptual site plan. Uh, what we've come to so far is about three, um, conceptual site plans. We've pretty much narrowed it down to one, and this would be, uh, basically what the city manager and I, um, have been reviewing, is these land uses, uh, which really consist of warehousing, flex space, uh, business park, commercial land uses, and just the placement of those, and determining the square footage. And that determination of the square footage is really important because that helps us prepare a water supply assessment to determine whether this project is feasible. So if we can have, uh, a determination that there is, um, sufficient groundwater, then we can move on to our next studies. Currently, right now, with, um, the proposal that we're looking at, our conceptual site plan, we're at about 17.1 million square feet out of the entire 1,800 acres of our industrial park area.
Stacy, it's been, it's been a long time since I talked to Mark Hendrickson about this, but do you know the county's existing inventory of vacant space? Do you know that figure?
I want to say...
Just for perspective, I know that 17 million is off the chart. I mean, is it 3 million, 2 million?
I mean... I know it's 17% when they calculate it altogether, which is extremely low. Uh, when we receive leads, and I've explained this to the council before, so, uh, the county is our contact person for leads. These are, um, industrial businesses that are looking to locate in the Central Valley. Los Banas, I can't even, uh, respond to maybe one out of 20 leads that we receive because we don't have the capacity and we don't have the shovel-ready project.
This gives us inventory?
Yes.
And a lot of it?
Ample, to be able to compete with the counties north of us, Stanislas and San Joaquin. So, in the downtown, I also wanted to highlight there, uh, what we're doing. We focused last year, in 2014, on Sixth Street, and this year in 2015, we've taken a big focus on I Street, and we've done a business walk in June, we did speak to the I Street businesses. Um, it was myself, uh, my planning technician Sandra Benetti, uh, the city manager, Steve Kerrigan, and our mayor, Mike Val... and our mayor, Mike Valalta. We went out to all the businesses and spoke to them, just introduced ourselves, let them know that there are organizations that they can be a part of, they can be a part of the Chamber and the Downtown Association. We also asked that they take ownership of just their storefronts, and if everybody helped out with just their storefronts, we could improve the way that our downtown looks. And also a part of our focus of downtown and particularly I Street, in working with the Code Enforcement Division of our Police Department, we did second unit inspections. And these are all of the units that are the motels on the second story. So you have the retail on the bottom, the second-story residential units on top. We went through several of these types of second units downtown. The Code Enforcement Division looked for safety and habitability of those units, and it was a joint effort between the Fire Department, Code Enforcement, Community and Economic Development, and the Building Department. And we went through all of those units, and then Code Enforcement wrote a letter to let those property owners know what they needed to do in order to bring those units into compliance, and they are currently working with those property owners to finalize those items that they needed to do in order to bring those properties under code. So another important project I wanted to highlight is a project that the Economic Development Advisory Commission is working on, is our downtown murals. If you can recall, several years ago, we did some fundraising, we sold some historical calendars, and this was to create historical murals downtown. The EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, did select three locations, and the first location for this mural would be on K Street and Sixth Street. It would be the northeast corner of K and Sixth Street. And this is just a preliminary sketch of what the artist Anne Whitehurst is working on. Just to give you an idea of what EDAC is looking at, that particular corner historically was a livery stable, and EDAC, their direction was that they wanted to represent, have this first mural represent historically what that corner was back in the 1800s, late 1800s, early 1900s of Los Banas. There's also a unique story of the McCarthy Livery Stable that then was sold to the Areca's, and the Areca family still has their flower shop near there. So a very interesting story of how that corner was developed and shaped out. A very exciting news that I wanted to share with you is that we did receive a letter on Friday that we are awarded the CDBG grant for Code Enforcement. So back in April, if you recall, a proposal came before you, and it's Community Development Block Grant. It was for Code Enforcement, and we were going to be able to, with that money, hire a contracted Code Enforcement Officer to be able to help our existing division. And on Friday, it was about 11-ish or so, Steve came over to me and showed me the letter. It was exciting news. Sandra Benetti did a lot of great work in putting that application together, and we were successful. So we're very excited about this particular grant. We should be working in the next couple of weeks through a checklist with CDBG. And the total amount is $322,500. 300,000 of that will go to the Code Enforcement Officer Division, and then 22,500 is for the general administration of the grant. So very exciting for us. And along the same lines of that particular grant, CDBG, we are still looking for an eight-to-10 unit apartment complex. We are preparing ourselves for the next NOFA 2016, which is Notice of Funding Availability from the Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, which is the state. So right now, we've been contacting brokers and realtors, letting you know that we're still interested, and although the market has not changed. So if you recall, back in April, we did come to the council with the activities that we were going to be applying for. At that time, we were only able to apply for Code Enforcement because we were anticipating applying for an eight-to-10 unit apartment complex, but the market, where property owners had bought those, particularly multifamily units, it was so high, and the market dropped that those units have not quite come back to the same rate that those property owners had bought those units at. So the market hasn't changed very much. We're still hoping, though, that a particular property owner would be willing to negotiate with us, and we would be able to secure an eight-to-10 unit complex in the future. Next, I wanted to highlight our residential history and go on to residential permits and what we see happening there. Back in 2008, and between 2008 and 2012, there were no new single-family residential permits issued. So there was four years there was zero permits issued. Then we saw in 2013, 20 single-family residential permits were issued to Anderson Homes, which was the Tiel Landing subdivision. But this was not a good indicator of where the market was at. That particular development agreement for that subdivision was expiring, and they were trying to pull their permits as quickly as possible in order to lock in their low impact fee rate. So it was not a good indicator of where we were at the market. But what we saw in 2014 did give us some hope. In 2014, we did issue 37 single-family residential permits. Those were to UC Construction for the Orchard Terrace Two project, and Valley Vanguard Properties to Regency Park. And at that point in 2014, what we saw the developers doing was really testing out the market and trying to find their price point of where single-family residential permits would be. This is an aerial map of where we see construction happening right now. So we have really four active subdivisions. They are Regency Park, Vineyards 17 and 18. We're wrapping up at Orchard Terrace Two. We see construction happening right now in Southbrook, which is Anderson. And within the next couple of months, we're going to be seeing some permits issued at Sandstone, which is Villages Three, right off of Badger Flat. So we'll have two projects on the south side and three subdivisions on the north side. This is an aerial, well, it's a photo of, this is Vineyard 17 and 18, and just looking, and it's hard to see here, but when you drive through these subdivisions, you see just rows of sold signs, which is promising and very exciting for the city of Los Banas to actually be seeing the market activated. So I did want to go through 2015 and what we see occurring in the market right now. We have issued 90 permits, and that is from January 1st to August 31st. They are to UC Construction, Valley Vanguard, and Anderson Homes. Very promising since January 1, it was about, Steve and I sat down and said, well, let's make some projections for the year. Let's see where we're going to be at. That also helps us with the budgeting for the fiscal year, where we think we will be. And Steve and I said, conservatively 80, but maybe max 100. And we really wanted to stick with those numbers, and it's very promising that as of August 31st, we're already at 90. And we're entering the last quarter of the year, and there's still plenty of time for developers to pull permits, and we're pretty confident that we're going to reach 100, maybe 100, 125. So that's very exciting for the city of Los Banas. And out of that, we finalized 52 homes, which is about 57%. That's a really good indicator of the market as well, that we don't have, we're about halfway there, but as they're being built, they're being sold. So what that means to the city, we receive the impact fees once they're occupied or once they're finalized. So we are receiving impact fees. We're able to kind of grow our impact fee accounts to be able to serve the community better. Also, what this means in the projection of residential permits is really rooftops equal population, and we really need to think about that, and that the community, the biggest complaint that I hear as being Community and Economic Development is that we don't have enough retail for our community. We don't have anywhere for people to shop, and they need to go to other cities in the Central Valley, or they need to go to the Bay Area. But rooftops equal population, which equal retail. So with that population, we will be seeing more retail come through, and really the magic number from an economic development perspective is about 50,000. Once we reach that 50,000 number, we will see bigger retails come through the city. And that concludes my presentation. We're excited about the future and definitely about what 2016 will bring.
Okay, well, good news about the 300 and something, $325,000. Great work. Now we'll have Code Enforcement Wednesday through Sunday, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Good. Ms. Freya.
Two questions. First of all, about how much do we get in impact fees per house?
So right now, it's about 25,000 if, without a development agreement, locking in a low rate. So it used to be about 28,000, but with the removal of the RTIF, the Regional Transportation Impact Fee, it brought us down to about 25.
Okay, and that's 25,000 into our general fund, or is that divided into our various enterprise funds and-
Various, exactly. There's police, fire, water, sewer, parks, you name it.
It's scattered between-
Exactly.
And then the next question is, based with what we have annexed now and what's entitled now, how many houses could be built now without annexing any other property?
Paper lot-wise, I would say we're less than 1,000 right now. We're eating away at that.
Okay, with the property we have annexed now, okay, that would be, that's entitled already and already mapped, about 1,000.
It's mapped, yeah, paper lots. So it's mapped and entitled, ready to go, could pull a permit essentially tomorrow.
Now, total as far as what we have annexed now, that hasn't been mapped and entitled, we have an estimate about how many houses, I guess, are one.
You know, the only subdivision that I can think of off the top of my head that's not been mapped is Villa Barano, which would add maybe another 500, 600 units max.
So we could, we can build about 1,500, 1,600 more houses with what we have annexed now, without annexing any other-
Essentially.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations on the grant. We can use the extra $300,000.
Turning me off.
No, you turned me off. Your own now. Don't touch me.
No, the one comment I wanted to make, and some people might be wondering, okay, we're picking up with the housing, is this really going to get out of control again? Our system is built here at City Hall for about 100 to 125 units a year. We don't have the bodies to do more than that, even if we wanted to. So we're going to keep a very close eye on this. We, you know, it's really nice to see around 100 get built. That would be fantastic because it all helps with the retail and other things. But I just want everyone to know that our system here at City Hall is built for about 100 to 125. So if things really start to heat up, we're going to come back and talk some more about it. So it's not like we're going to show up one day and say, we're building 300 homes. Guess what just happened last week? You know, we're building all these houses. We just, we're not built for it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Stacy, from anyone? All right, thank you. Let's go on to item 10, Police Department Presentation Update to Animal Control Ordinances. And this is for, is an information item with direction from the City Council on how to proceed. Commander Hadden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My presentation includes proposed changes to our current animal control ordinances. Our ordinances were first adopted over 60 years ago and last updated almost 20 years ago. So it's time for some changes. We've grown in population, and a group of citizens have come forward and talked to us at the, at the Police Department level. They've spoken at council meetings about the need to make some proposed changes to our animal control ordinances. So that's what we're in the process of doing, but it's going to take input from the council as far as the direction that you'd like to see us proceed. So what we'd like to move forward with is kind of a two-part process where I'm going to go through these talking points one by one, and I'd like the council to provide some input back to me so that I can take that back to the folks I'm working with and develop an ordinance that works well for Los Banas. The goals of my presentation are, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the climate and animal control, the things that we're doing, staffing. I'll be brief, I promise. And then I want to introduce the proposed ordinances, the talking points. These five talking points that you're going to hear about, these are, the main points are the ones that were, I guess, the hot topics of the public, or the most vocal group of citizens that have come forward. These are the, the issues that they felt was important. So those are the main issues that I'm going to talk about. And then lastly, I'd like to gather input and direction from the council on each point. Currently in animal control, under our Code Enforcement umbrella, we have one full-time Code Enforcement Officer, that's Jason Martin. He works typically Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. And what Jason's day consists of is primarily responding to animal control calls. A lot of his duties are data entry and those types of things because he hasn't really had help out there at the shelter other than our volunteer staff. I'm actually pleased to announce that we're getting ready to implement a part-time animal control CSO at the shelter, so that'll be very helpful. And one of our goals with that person is to establish some regular shelter hours so that people can come out to the shelter and view dogs and those types of things. It'll be tremendously helpful to Jason Martin. Our volunteers, our volunteer group, the Los Banas Volunteers for Animals, this is a great group. They do a lot of work for us at the shelter, and to be frankly honest with you, our operation would, would kind of fall apart without them because they do tremendous work for us in adopting the animals and those types of things. And I'll talk about that when I talk about vouchers, some of the things and programs that they help us do, cleaning the shelter, you name it. To talk about some statistics with animal control, Jason, I shouldn't say Jason Martin, the entire Police Department combined with Jason Martin responded to just over 3,000 animal calls in 2013 and 2014. And the overall goal of this ordinance is to reduce the overpopulation in town of animals. In 2012, the shelter received 2,037 dogs and cats. In 2013, it was 2,406, and 2,398 by 2014. We are seeing that the number of animals that we're able to adopt out is going up, so the euthanization rate or the kill rate is going down, and that's good. And I think that part of that comes in with our voucher programs and the things that we're doing in combination with our volunteers. So how the voucher program works is the city typically gives $10,000 a year towards vouchers, and those are given out on a first-come, first-served basis through the city. And you can come to the lobby of the Police Department and fill out an application for a voucher. They're typically $20 for cats, $30 for dogs in our program, and those are issued out by our department. And then we talked earlier tonight about the grant that was received for over $5,000, so that'll be helpful. In 2013, between the combined efforts of the Los Banas Volunteers for Animals and the Police Department, we issued 437 vouchers. In 2014, we actually issued 906 vouchers between the two combined programs because we learned in 2013 that we weren't including the cats that the volunteers, the cat clinics that they were doing. So 906 is quite a significant number of vouchers and spay neuters between the two programs. To give an example, a neighboring city that we did a study with, they issued 100, and they were breed-specific to pit bulls and chihuahuas, which they were having a problem with. So I'm very proud of our program, and I'm pleased to update you about that. Our first issue here is the breeder's permit. A breeder's permit or letter's permit is written authorization issued annually by the city, given permission to a breed, excuse me, to breed a dog or cat. The permit is typically valid for one year from the date of issuance and may be renewed annually. And we can look at that, there's different ways that we can write this ordinance. It could be a two-year permit, a breeder's permit. And the way that this breeder's permit works is, the goal is- is to reduce the number of unwanted animals. So, with this breeder's permit, when somebody comes in to obtain a license through the city, they're going to be asked the question, "Is your dog spayed or neutered?" If the animal is not, then they would either have to make the choice to obtain a breeder's permit or go ahead and have the dog spayed or neutered prior to the license being issued. One of the issues with the, or one of the things with the breeder's permit is, excuse me, the breeder's permit is also going to help us at the shelter level. One of the ways that it works is when we get out to the shelter and we, Jason Martin picks up someone's animal and intakes it, and the owner comes out looking for the dog, they would meet with Jason, and he would ask them if the dog's spayed or neutered. If the dog is spayed or neutered, they would, excuse me, if the dog's spayed or neutered, they would get the breeder's permit at that time. Breeder's permits can result in unnecessary euthanasia of dogs and cats and uncontrolled breeding. Part of the solution is for the dogs to be licensed or spayed or neutered and regulating breeding. Some of the alternatives to the breeder's permit are, the council can adopt and make no change to the ordinance, or we can consider other options, other options in that. I'm sorry, I'm not doing a good job of articulating this. For some reason, I got nervous. Do you guys have any questions about what I've said thus far?
Keep going, you're doing fine.
In the breeder's permit?
Boom.
So, another way that this breeder's permit works is, when we issue the breeder's permit, we attach a number to that breeder's permit. And they are allowed to have one litter per year with the breeder's permit, and they're required to advertise that number when they sell the dogs or whatever they decide to do with the dogs, so that we can enforce this thing. So, at this point, I'd kind of like the council's input, help me get on track here as far as, any questions you have, anything that I missed?
Let's see, the attorney has a question.
I have a question, I just have a comment. We saw a number of different ways that this was done. One of the ways was if you were planning on having a litter, then you had to obtain a litter permit specifically to that litter. And the other alternative, like Jason was talking, was actually if you had an intact, I think that's the right word, if you had a non-spayed or neutered animal, you'd have to have a breeder's permit all of the time. So, there's a couple of different ways you can go. If you're, in terms of these permitting processes, you can have a permit that's litter-specific. If I have a 10-year-old dog that I'm not going to be breeding anytime soon, I wouldn't need a breeder's permit. If I had a young dog that I planned on having a couple of litters, I could either have a breeder's permit or a litter permit. So, it's kind of a, it's the same idea, just a little bit different process. And the way that these are enforced is when the owner of the dog goes to sell puppies, they have to advertise the litter permit number, the breeder's permit number, or the city would key in on the fact that they don't have one, and then bad things start happening to those people in terms of fines and such. So, there's probably, when we come back with this, if this is something that you want to consider, we maybe have two different schemes for you to consider as well. So, and again, the idea of the breeder's permit is to do something to encourage people to spay and neuter their dogs so that they're not a bunch of unwanted animals out there.
Okay. Mrs. Stonegrove?
I was just going to ask the question that I think has just been answered about, when a citizen goes to obtain a license for their dog, then they would either have to have it animal spayed or neutered or get a breeder's permit. But from my understanding, that's one way to do it, and another way would be to go with a litter permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have right now.
All right. Let's go to Mr. Kerrigan.
Commander Haddon, I'm not sure if this is an easy question or a hard one because I'm getting a little tired. But how do we enforce something like this, where, I know you have good people out there that will read this, hear about it, come in, work with the city, got it. And there's also another segment of society that's going to do their own thing, and we'll have to address that. But then, I'm also thinking of people that breed dogs for hunting and things, because that's, and there's a lot of hunters in our community. So, how do you, how do you reach out to them also? I mean, how's this all going to work?
They can obtain the permit through the city by paying a nominal fee, whatever it is. And it's all, again, based on cost recovery model. And they'll have the rights to breed those dogs. And we can apply this a number of different ways. We can apply the ordinance a number of different ways.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mrs. Lewis, and then back to Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. I know some of our neighboring communities under the breeder's permit, if their animal, if they're caught selling animals that have not been spayed or neutered, then the female has to be brought in as well. The mother of the puppies or the cats has to be brought in, has to be brought in, so that they're either going to obtain that license or get the mother spayed and neutered as well. I wanted to go back a little bit on Jason's involvement when customers come in and to obtain a license. The question is, is your dog spayed or neutered? I would assume that we're going to require some sort of verification from those customers by virtue of a certificate that you get from your veterinarian to prove that that's the case.
Exactly, exactly. At that time, they would need to show proof whether, from their vet, whether the dog was altered or unaltered. And at that point, we would determine if the breeder's certificate is necessary and what additional fees need to be imposed at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, Jason, go ahead.
I'm going to try issue two here, reclaim fee waiver.
Yes, go ahead.
So, the question here is whether the council wants Jason and staff to work on language that would institute a breeder's permit. So, that's kind of the idea behind these talking points, is Jason doesn't want to direct me or someone else to write something that the council's not interested in even considering or entertaining. So, if we could just have a sense of whether, and you're not committing to anything tonight, but a sense as to whether you want time spent on something like a litter permit or a breeder's permit in this ordinance.
Okay, a couple of people buzzing in, let's do that. Jason, I'm going to interrupt you, okay? Now I've got everybody almost lining up here. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Oh, I just want to say that I like the idea a lot, and I would like to see this come back. Whether it's whether we do the breeder's permit or the litter permit, I guess I would have to learn more about each type, but I think it's, I think we should definitely be doing one or the other.
Mr. Freya?
Firstly, I think we have enough on our plate right now legally and all the other stuff we're doing. I don't know whether this law's going to solve the problem. You have a cultural problem, and you also have just an attitude problem, I guess, with people. You have a cultural problem with people that aren't responsible with their pets. And I don't think, you know, more legislation doesn't necessarily fix things. And I think our biggest problem is that we're too shorthanded to enforce what we have, as we well know. And I'd rather see our money be spent rather than paying Mr. Vaughn to research the law, to hire some more help with handling the stray dogs that people don't take care of. My own opinion.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. I think, you know, my understanding of a litter permit versus a breeder permit, to me, would be specific to like people who are trying to breed purebred dogs for resale. I know that when I purchased my dog, I had to sign an agreement with the breeder that I would not breed my dog since it was a pet, and that I, you know, I had to verify that I did have the dog fixed. Whereas the litter, I would assume is just people who have desires to breed their dog, and maybe it's not a purebred, maybe it's a mix, but they still want to breed a dog. And I may be off-base on that. So, that's kind of my understanding and take on that. I would hope that, you know, I know that sometimes these new changes, since we haven't had any changes in our codes for quite some time, can be a little bit scary for the city. And we do have a lot of irresponsible people who don't do the proper thing in regards to raising an animal, taking care of it, making sure that it's spayed or neutered. And, you know, you'll find on the internet all the time, people who just want to breed their dog because it's cute. And then, when things don't turn out the way that they want it to turn out, the dog gets dumped at the shelter or dumped out on the street. And to me, that's inhumane. So, you know, we've got to find a way to remedy this problem. And, you know, also, these, it'll take time for the community to adjust to this, but in time, I think people will begin to understand that this is what we need to do to make a healthy environment for our animals that people own in our community, and also to control different issues, problems, diseases that are out there, you know, animals that aren't cared for properly, don't get their proper shots. And I've spoken to several people, you know, some that work in pet store communities who have animals that have contracted communicable diseases that are deadly because they didn't catch it in time. So, there's a lot to just putting a new law down in a community for this. This is about health issues regarding our animal control population. And I know our volunteers do a very good job of what they do, and they love the animals that they have to work with. But it's like anything in life when it comes to changes. It's learning to accept the change for the betterment of the whole community. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Mr. Soler?
Yeah, if we could, if it suits everybody, if we could go through the whole list and then come back and...
You want to go through the whole list?
I really do, because I, like, for me, I think that if we're looking at costs and we're looking at everything that's involved in this, I think that, you know, can we do all five? Does it make sense to do all five? Well, hey, if we had, if you can guarantee me that we could enforce all five 100%, then I would say, hey, great, let's sign up for all five. But for me, I'd like to see the whole list, and then I would like to be able to say, well, you know, if there was one thing that we could for sure do, it's this, and maybe that helps eliminate some of our problems. And then, you know, so, for me, if I can see the whole list, and if everybody wants to weigh in as they go on, that's fine. I just will wait until the end and kind of give my opinion on the whole list, if I could do that.
Okay, I'm just going to ask the council out of courtesy. You want to continue with this, or you want to continue it to another meeting? Because I'm open for you the suggestion. I don't know how much longer this is going to take. If you want to trudge through this tonight, we can do that. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Just personally, as tired as I am, I know that there are people in the audience that have waited for a long time to get to this item. So, I think that we owe it to them to at least go through the presentation.
Sure, sure. Had to ask.
That's just my opinion.
Okay. Everybody else good with that? Guys want to go forward? All right, let's go.
Okay, the second issue is a reclaim fee waiver. And currently, the city charges when your animal's impounded at our shelter, Jason Martin's picked it up off the street. If he picks up your dog and your dog's spayed or neutered, when you come into the shelter, you're going to pay a first-time fee of $45. If your animal happens, plus $10 a day boarding. If your animal happens to be unaltered, you're going to pay $80 to Jason at that time. Now, what this reclaim fee waiver does is, it provides a mechanism for getting people to obtain a breeder's permit or basically be responsible pet owners. So, in the two scenarios, you have the one where the pet owner's been responsible, spayed or neutered the pet, it just happened to get out, it was a fluke, and they come in to the shelter, and we go ahead and waive the fee for them because they've done the responsible thing, somebody came in the backyard, whatever the issue was, and they let the dog out. The second issue is, they come to the shelter, and they meet with Jason, and their dog is unaltered. At that point, Jason can allow them to obtain the proper city license, obtain a breeder's permit, get the dog spayed and neutered, and at that time, he would waive those associated fees. And again, this is just to reduce the overpopulation of animals in our city and try to reduce that number of inhumane treatment and euthanizations that we go through and that we see at the shelter. And that's the point of the reclaim fee waiver. Some of the alternatives to the reclaim waiver, we can make no change. We can consider other options for promoting and supporting low-cost spay and neutering, which I think that we're doing that in Los Benos. I think that we're nailing that part of it. Or we can consider a voucher, I guess, if you will. So, when this person comes into the shelter with their dog, in the case where the dog was unattacked or not spayed or neutered, what we would do is, they would pay us an amount of money, whatever the established fee was for a voucher. And they'd take that voucher to go down and get the dog spayed and neutered. So, if the person isn't responsible, and they decide, I paid the fee, and I have the voucher, but I'm not going to take it down and get the dog spayed and neutered, we're not out any money. And if we catch the dog again, those fees are going to increase. Issue number three, surrender fees for relinquishing an animal to the shelter. So, at this point, we don't charge any fees if you want to release your animal to the shelter. So, if you decide that you got your puppy, and it was cute, and you no longer want it because it turned into a big dog and it eats a lot, whatever the case may be, at this point, you can come down to the shelter, hand it to Jason Martin, give him a little history of the dog, and we'll take it. Doesn't cost you a dime. What this proposed ordinance would do is, it would allow us to charge a surrender's fee to recover some of the costs associated with the staff time and adopting the animals out. Now, there's pros and cons against this issue. You have the folks that think that issuing, that charging this fee is going to basically have somebody turn the dog loose and be reckless about it, and animal control's going to be chasing the dog, it's going to be running into traffic. And then you have the other side of the coin that think that you need to be a responsible pet owner, and we're going to go ahead and charge you this fee if you can't take care of your animal. The alternatives, again, to this, we can make no change to the ordinance, or we can consider other options for promotion and support of low-cost spay and neutering. Issue number four, restriction on the number of dogs and cats per individual household. The way that this works is, the council would establish a limitation, whatever it is, if it's two dogs, two cats, three dogs, three cats, whatever, per household. And the goal of that is to reduce the overpopulation of dogs and cats in the city. We've seen the horror stories. We went out to houses where there's 100-plus cats. It seems like a very unhealthy situation for the folks at the house and the cats and the neighbors and everybody else involved. So, we want to be able to put a stop to that in those types of extreme situations. Now, we're not saying that if you have five dogs, that we're going to come and take, you know, a couple of the dogs, because we've established a three limit. You can obtain a permit through this, through the city, to maintain those dogs. And then we know who you are, we know where you live, you've registered with us. If there's complaints by the neighbors for the smell, the odors, those types of situations, we can come out and handle those issues. we can come out and handle those issues. There's a number of cities and the counties that have adopted or implemented these types of restrictions, and a lot of the cities that we studied seem to think that these are successful. Again, we can make no change to the current ordinance. We can consider ordinance amendment that would allow for the restriction of number of cats, dogs in a single household. We'll consider an amendment that would require a kenneling permit to set forth the standard. So the kenneling permit is, again, what I was talking about, where the person would come and register with the city and obtain a permission, basically, to have more than the standard number of dogs and cats, because we want those people that are the rescues and those type of organizations to be able to operate in town as long as they're following the rules and regulations. Our fifth issue, regulations of feral cats. The way that this works is it's either based on a trap-neuter-release model, and we get, we have issues of people calling and complaining all the time, my neighbor's feeding the cats, the cats are congregating, they're defecating in my flower beds, it's unhealthy, they're spraying on my car. So with this ordinance, a caretaker, somebody that says, they're not my cats, they're not my responsibility, I'm just feeding them, this person would be required to register with the city as a caretaker of feral cats. What this caretaker would have to do is feed the cats in a daily manner that doesn't allow them to leave an excess amount of food to attract rodents and other animals to the area. It also requires them to regularly trap and spay and neuter cats over eight weeks old, have those cats, arrange to have those cats tested for feline leukemia or feline immune deficiency virus. And those cats tested positive would have to be either humanely euthanized or kept in an indoor facility so that they don't infect the rest of the cat population. The cats that are spayed and neutered or part of this program, there would be a requirement that they have their ears tipped as a mechanism to identify that the cats have been spayed or neutered. And the caregiver would also be required to arrange for all trapped cats to be vaccinated by whatever vaccinations are required by the code at that time. And again, we can make no change to the ordinance, or we can consider an ordinance amendment that would establish a trap-neuter return program. Some of the other ordinances that we considered, these weren't part of the five that I talked about, they were ordinances that staff had considered and thought would be nice additions to the ordinance. And one of them is animal waste. So the animal waste ordinance, what this does is it requires someone to carry a container or a plastic bag or something when they're out walking their dogs at our parks, on our rail trails, downtown, whatever, to dispose of the waste so that it doesn't become a problem for everyone else. We also want to update our vicious or dangerous dog ordinance. It's currently covered under the Food and Agriculture Code, and that's kind of what we've been following, just because we don't really have a good ordinance for dealing with vicious or dangerous dogs. So we'll be updating that to model the Food and Ag Code. Cleaning of dog runs and prevention of flies and rodents. The way that this works is it requires the accumulation of feces to be removed prior to offensive odors or flies. It requires that the feces be disposed of in plastic bags and in appropriate garbage containers. And the overall goal is to minimize offensive odors, and to do that, the dog runs need to be cleaned at once, at least once per day, per the ordinance. Vehicle confinement. What this one does is it allows our animal control officer or our police officers to, when they respond to these dogs or these calls where the dogs are unattended in the vehicles, it requires them to, or allows them to force entry into the vehicle and get that dog out if the dog is in distress. And they'll check to make sure that the dog's not in distress or that it's ventilated, those types of things, before they do that. Lastly, we want to talk about dog parks. It's kind of been the chief's goal to someday have a dog park in Los Benos. So as we're considering this, we want to write in the ordinances to be able to enforce the rules of the dog park when that happens. And it would provide that the dog, that the dog parks are used for walking and recreation, training, socialization of dogs. To be allowed in the dog park, the dog would have to be licensed, and you must show proof, must have current vaccines, and they'd have to show proof of that. The dogs would have to be altered, they'd have to be over four months of age, and they couldn't be priorly determined to be a nuisance animal. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go back to council and get input. I hope I'm not buzzing through that too fast. I hope that you're understanding it and all of that.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. You know, I just want to say that these five issues are like some of the really major issues we have here in town. And what the police department and our animal control department is trying to do is put us in a position to allow our animal control officer to have tools. I don't think they're saying that, you know, he's got to go out there and pound the pavement and hit everybody across the head with a stick and make sure that this happens today. Because, you know, at some point, as our fees increase for some of the violations that have been described today, it allows more money for our animal control department, which I understand is operating at a deficit right now. So in my opinion, these fees are kind of necessary. And last I look, well, which was in May, I don't know that there's been any change, for our spayed and neutered animals, for a one, two, and three-year license is $7, $12, and $17. For unaltered, one, two, and three, it's $14, $26, and $38. So it's only like a 50% increase, which is very low. Some of our neighboring communities, and for one, two, and three years, it's $10, $20, and $30. For unaltered, it's $100, $200, and $300. So there's a significant jump for you not having your animal spayed and neutered. And the surrender fee in one of our neighboring communities is like $50 for a dog, for puppies, six months, it's 20; cats, 20; and kittens, six months and under is 10. So the fee is pretty nominal to surrender an animal, based on the fact that under our current code, I think we have to keep it for three days, and for the feeding and the staff time that it takes to care for these animals, it's really not a lot of money to do that. And I understand that we've been having people come from other communities where their departments have told them to come to Los Benos and leave your animal, because they don't do it. It puts a burden on our city to take animals from people who come from other places. So these are just some cost recovery issues for us to maintain, and hopefully, at one point, to be in a position to apply for some of the grants that we are, could be eligible to get, and to be able to hire another animal control officer. So it's not just about putting restrictions on people and getting them to be responsible pet owners, but it's also to help our code enforce, our animal control department, to be able to get additional employment, to operate, and bring a better service to our community. So again, I don't really see these as, for me personally, a choice. I see them all as being very important, but to also assure the public and our animal control department and police department that we're not looking at trying to put an extra burden on our personnel that we have to enforce everything that's here. It's just that we haven't updated our codes for quite some time, and we need to bring them in line with state law and be uniform about some of the things that other communities are doing, and things that we are, ourselves, are even doing better than other communities. So thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Okay. Mrs. Soler?
Yeah, so, back on the reclaim fee waiver, so that's basically what you're asking for there is some kind of language that allows you to give them a waiver in lieu of paying the impound fee? Is that what, is that what, how I read that?
No, on the reclaim...
Fee waiver?
Yeah, on the reclaim fee waiver... I'm sorry. Chief?
Yeah?
Do you want to say something?
On the reclaim fee waiver, what this does is when, again, when we obtain their animal into the shelter, we would waive that fee if, on a first-time offense, if the dog had already been spayed or neutered.
Gotcha.
In the case where the dog had not been spayed or neutered, in that case, we would go ahead and reclaim, waive those fees if they went ahead and spayed and neutered the dog.
I have a simple question. The charges to spay and neuter are less than the charges to reclaim, correct?
Yes, or about the same, so you're breaking even.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so then, that makes more sense. So then, if, my dog's Holly, she's a little Yorkie, and she tends to like to get out once in a while, and she's usually pretty good about staying around. But the one time she did get out was the day my wife gave her a bath, and she didn't have her collar on with her name on it. Luckily, one of my neighbors found her. But so she gets picked up, Jason picks her up, she's been fixed, I go down there, because she's already been fixed, I have the potential of having that fee waived.
Under this code, he's going to give it to you. He's going to say, you know, accidents happen, and call it a day.
Okay. And then, what would happen in the proposed change? So we're asking...
No, I'm sorry. You're, in the proposed change, he wouldn't charge you.
He would say, okay...
Under the current ordinance, you're going to be charged a $45 fee.
Okay, and now, do you see that that causes people not to pick up their animal because that fee is there? Have you ever had that, where they came down there, and it's like, well, there's $45 there, I'm not paying that, I'm out of here?
I guess it's, I guess it's...
I'm seeing a bunch of heads shake yes out there.
See, with, at this point, we try to work with people. I think that Jason Martin can, he's the one that makes that determination. We don't allow the volunteers to make that determination of fee waivers, but Jason's goal is to get the animal back to the owner. So if somebody comes and gives them that hard story that, hey, the dog got out, we just can't, we can't afford it right now, we, that's the reason the dog is, you know, unaltered, it's not spayed or neutered, he's going to, he's going to do what he can to help him out, and he does.
Okay, so...
I'm seeing, so we're saying, that's not happening out there? Okay.
Well, so, I like the idea of the reclaim fee waiver. I like, and I like the idea that it incentivizes people, if it's not fixed, if they're not fixed, then you would hopefully use one of the vouchers to give to them, so that it's basically, they're coming out cost-neutral on it. And so that would incentivize them to get their animal fixed. Because I agree, we do have, we do have a problem with a lot of unwanted animals. The surrender fee is the one that I still have a hard time wrapping my head around, and for the simple reason is, is I guess the honest people are going to pay the fee. And I guess the ones that don't care turned it loose anyways, and they were never going to take it down there. So is the reason for a surrender fee is so that we can generate some revenue from those honest people to hopefully, hopefully be able to issue more vouchers for more spay and neutering, to offset some of the costs? Is that what we're looking, is that, would you say that's the reason for that, then?
Yes, that's the idea behind that, to offset some of the cost on that. Now, with that, there's, you know, we could also issue a hardship waiver in that case. So somebody comes down, and they're not able to pay for it because they're, whatever, they lost their job, or whatever the situation may be. This particular family wants to give their dog up, they want it to go to a home, they want it to be adopted, but they can't afford it. Then, one of the, I guess, the way that we can meet in the middle on the issue is that we allow a hardship waiver to be filled out at the shelter, and at that point, the paid staff on duty would make the determination whether or not to honor the hardship waiver.
And it seems to me, in those situations, that you're damned if you do and damned if you don't, because the reality says if they can't afford to do it and you don't take it, they're going to, we're going to say, sorry, we're not going to take it, they're going to get, drive in the car, and if they can't afford to have it, then it's just going to end up and cause more staff time, because now someone's going to call it in, and Jason's going to have to bring it in.
Right.
So I would, the breeders, I guess, there's two of them on here that I'm having a little bit harder time with, is the breeders permits, just because I, maybe I don't understand it enough to understand how it's, how it's going to work. It's in conjunction with, I guess, if your animal gets brought in, that's when you would, if you want it to stay natural, unaltered, there you go, then you would have to ask for that, you would have to get that breeder's permit. Otherwise, we're going to tell them to get spayed or neutered.
Right.
So that one there, and then...
That's, councilor, if I may interrupt, that's one option. Or at the, also in the, in the beginning, when you obtain your dog's license, you can make that choice at that point, too. And we could go in the direction of the litter permit, if you decide not to make the choice at that point to spay or neuter your dog. It's young, you don't want to do it at that point, so maybe obtain the litter permit when you're ready to breed and have the puppies.
And so that would be more specifically, when you wanted to, if you wanted to have a litter, you need to have that litter permit. If we pass an ordinance that said, in the city of Los Benos, if you're going to have a litter of puppies, you need to have a litter permit?
Right.
Okay. It'd be interesting to see what kind of comes with. The one, I guess, the regulation of the feral cats, I'd like to see more information on that. When it comes to restricting the number of dogs and cats per household, I would definitely need to see information that says, like, how do you come up with that? You know, what, four animals for, I mean, I have two dogs and a cat. That's a great number, I don't want anymore. My wife, my wife would kill me if we had anymore. But what's to say that, you know, the family next door that, you know, they want to have four dogs, there's four people, they each want their own dog? I don't know. Where do we make that determination? And is it our, is it our job to make that determination? That's the one I probably would struggle with the most, is that I don't want to take anybody's personal rights away.
Right.
And it's back to, how do you regulate that? Because I think what we're going to get into is the honest people are going to be the ones that follow it, and the ones that are causing a lot of our problems now are not going to follow it. So that's what I have for it. Thank you. Thanks for the work on this, too.
Thank you. And councilor, if I could address that, the responsible owners in that, that are going to get tagged, or that you're saying are going to get tagged, I don't think that that's necessarily the case. Can you repeat that again?
Well, I just, I guess, if I had four dogs, I feel like I'm a pretty responsible pet owner, I make sure my dogs are taken care of and fed and all that. But if the number we come up with is now you can only have three dogs or two dogs per household, I'm going to be, and I heard you guys say that it's not like something that's going to happen overnight, but I'm going to be responsible about the number I have. But the people that are causing a lot of the problems why we're even having this conversation are still going to have five dogs or seven dogs or whatever they, whatever they want to do, because unless, you know, we decide to get into the aerial drones and going over everybody's household and figuring out how many animals they have, and I guess through attrition and calls for service, you could start to find out who the bad actors are. It just, I guess a lot of it boils down to is, how do we enforce a lot of these, a lot of these rules? That's the big question for me, is how do you enforce it? When we were already talking about, we're just super excited because we got another code enforcement officer, and I know that, you know, animal control falls under code enforcement now. We're already, in my opinion, you know, we have a hard enough time keeping up with what we have to do with the staff we have, and then to add a bunch more rules and regulations, that would be my biggest thing. Matter is, is how do we, how do we enforce this? And I don't, I don't want to sit up here and give all you folks a bunch of false promises, okay, we're going to pass all these ordinances, and then everything's going to be great, when the reality is, is if we don't have the staffing to support it... If we're going to go down this road, I would like to see, be real changes that I know that we're going to be able to enforce and we're going to be able to make a difference with.
On this one, I think we're looking to be able to enforce those situations where, when we get the complaint from the neighbor that this person has seven or eight dogs in the backyard and they're not cleaning, cleaning up over them, that's the, those are the ones, that's the point when we'd be able to enforce it at this point. Later on, when we get up to staffing animal control, and my mind was going 100 miles a minute when you're talking, I'm thinking of all these things and I lost my train of thought, but our animal control officers can go to the door and do license checks and check on the number of dogs and those types of things to make sure that we're in compliance. But, again, with this ordinance, it can be written in such a way that allows for kenneling permits, to allow people to have more than whatever the set number of dogs is.
Okay, and then, that's, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
One of the, one of the ideas with the kenneling ordinance was not necessarily to prohibit anyone from having a set number of animals, it was more so to apply reasonable regulations. This was one of the reasons why we thought about this idea, is reasonable regulations for pet owners who have four dogs and four cats, or five dogs, or, or 16 cats. We just want to be able to provide them with regulations that make sure that the health and safety and the environment that these animals live in, the neighbors live in, are all conducive to harmony of the neighborhood. So, and Jason hit on it before I had a chance to talk about it, the other idea behind the kenneling permit is, right now, we don't have a mechanism in place where if we respond out to a home based on a complaint where a pet owner has 30 or 40 cats, and they're, and they are causing that nuisance-type behavior for their neighbors, we have an avenue or tool on our tool belt now with this ordinance to allow us to effect some change to remedy that situation. So, and you're right, we get the resource idea, I think it's been spoken of a couple times tonight. Our so animal control officer kind of looks at us with wide eyes going, oh my God, you're going to pass all these ordinances, and I'm going to be responsible for doing all these things. And we've tried to assure him to the best of our ability that, you're only one person, you only work eight hours a day. If these new ordinances come up and there's an opportunity to take some action on one of them, you're going to do less somewhere else. So, there's a give and a take and all that, and we understand that. Until we get some more staffing, that's just going to be the case, but we embrace the idea of the change because it provides us more tools on the tool belt to do our jobs better in these unique situations that we don't really run across every day. So, that's kind of the idea behind the kenneling.
I want to thank you for the presentation again, and thank the members of the audience that are here tonight. I, I really, I think the first one, the breeder's permit and the reclaim waiver, those are like two that I think are really the most important. The surrender fee, when I first heard about it, I was skeptical, like Scott was saying, but after being presented with the research, is what I understand is that, in other communities, the surrender fee has not led to more, to people abandoning their animals more. If it's a way that we can generate a little bit, you know, more money, that we can help spay and neuter other animals, I think that's something that we should definitely consider doing. I also had concerns about number four, because again, if someone's got a big property and they want to have five or six dogs and they're taking care of them, I mean, to me, that's better than, than, you know, being somewhere else where they're not being taken care of. But, I also just want to say, because I've heard a couple times about like the issues of staffing and us not being able to enforce things and, and being careful to, you know, create new ordinances that we're not going to be able to enforce. I don't, I don't really think that's a good excuse to not do anything, because we have a lot of ordinances in our books, and if we just look at code enforcement, for an example, and, and the time and effort and energy we've spent in, on code enforcement in the past year, year and a half, two years, we're not going to catch every single person that parks their car on their lawn, or that doesn't move the car from the street. But, it doesn't mean that we don't have laws against that, and we don't give our animal control officers and our volunteers and our police officers the tools that they need to be able to use, like the chief kind of spoke to. So, I think these are really, really important steps that we should be taking, and I'm really, I would be really interested in seeing these items come back, you know, in another meeting where we could talk about actually, you know, putting some of this into law. I would be interested, and I don't know if you have heard maybe, from, it seems like the volunteers that we have with, with the animals, that are with the animals every day or have a wealth of information. Did you get a sense from them about breeder's permits versus litter permits and what they think would be more effective?
We actually presented this to our animal control group last week, and we didn't get a whole lot of feedback from, from the entire group as far as what they'd like to see as far as breeder permit versus litter permit, but the one, the ones that did speak up did like the idea of the breeder's permit.
Okay, that's kind of, in my mind, what I was kind of tending towards, just because from my, like, very limited understanding that we maybe have a little bit more control with the breeder's permit, that, to me, if someone has an unaltered animal, it should be more expensive for them to have that animal than if the animal is spayed or neutered. That's just my opinion, but I think that would be, that would be really important.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone that came and stayed tonight. Your stamina is phenomenal. Thank you, and Commander Headen and your whole team that took on a large task, and want to thank you for your work and effort. Just sitting here listening to everything, I don't think there's any way we're going to get this one right tonight. I think it's going to be a work in progress over time, and I don't mean a couple meetings, I mean like six months to a year. And if I'm right, keep that in your head, it makes me feel good when you do that. I think it's going to take two to three years before we see a reduction in the animal population, because it's going to take that long to do the outreach, have neighbors contact us, find a way to, some way to get Jason some help, and I don't know if it's through grants or what, but Jason Martin is a one-man show really right now, and yes, they'll be part-timers and we have volunteers, I get all that, it's just, you presented a lot of information to us tonight, and, you know, I don't, I want you to have some things to walk away with. That's what I guess I'm going to ask the council, is, are you giving Commander Headen enough to do some work so that he can at least take one bite at this apple and then, you know, we can, again, it's going to take a few meetings or, you know, time, it's going to take time to really get this one right, but I just, I guess, I want to make sure you get what you need tonight, but ultimately, I want to make sure Jason Martin, you know, feels comfortable doing his job every day and has, you know, the tools that he needs to do his job. So, I guess, ultimately, I'm saying is, this one's going to take a while. A lot of times, we can do it in one meeting. I don't think that's the case at all, and I don't mean a meeting or two, I think we're going to be here on a regular basis until we get this thing fine-tuned and right for Los Angeles. So, do you have some direction? Do you have, do you feel like you got something tonight, or do you need more from them on a few of these items? I heard a couple of comments, but, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I have more comments. I don't have more comments right now. Mr. Freya has a comment.
I know it's late, we've run later before. The, getting back, as you went on, vicious dogs, we've got to deal with that. That's going to be dealt with in no uncertain terms.
Thank you.
The idea of cleanup behind yourself in the parks and whatnot, the way Canada does it is they have little stations with bags, it takes public works, or they keep those full of pickup bags, every park, every walk has it, and that, you know, might be an expense that'd be less than some other expenses that we would have to help keep cleaning up, I know. And so, that, the fact that those things are available and convenient, and they're close to, and you have garbage cans close by, that really does help on that. Also, the, tonight, we have people here tonight, now, none of them have gotten up to say anything, and I sure would like to hear what they have to say, because I assume they had, they have ideas, and they're here because they have ideas, and we're here now, we stayed here now because you came and stayed. If you have something to say, Mayor, I would love to hear what, what our constituents or our citizens have to say here, that stayed this, held out here. So, if they, I would love to see that.
Okay. I have a couple of more comments, and then I will happily do that.
Thanks.
Chief, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, maybe we could take this in the opposite direction and say, based on what I'm hearing, are there any of the issues or ordinances that we've discussed tonight that you are not interested in us pursuing? Because I get the impression that all of them are okay. So, if there's one that you're not interested, maybe we can take it from that standpoint. And I just wanted to talk about the question that came up about the breeder's permit and the litter permit, and we talked about enforcement, or the question of enforcement came up, and it's on the advertising, as far as we can see in it right now. If, any direction that we go within the breeder's certificate or the litter certificate, when someone advertises, whether it be on Craigslist, the Enterprise, or they're out in front of Kmart, and they're advertising their animals for sale, our enforcement ability will come in and we walk up to them and say, can we take a look at your breeder certificate or your litter certificate? And if they don't have that, that's when we have the ability to take an enforcement action, because they haven't obtained that prior to the litter coming. And it's all surrounding the idea of we're trying to reduce that pet overpopulation that we've been dealing with for years. So, that's all I have.
That's an, that's an excellent point. Thank you. Let's see, who else do we have here? Mr. Carrigan, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Freya, your light's still on?
I'm done.
Okay. Now, let's go to the podium, and is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment?
Sorry, a couple of topics here, a lot of topics, good ones brought up here, but one of them that has some concern is the quantity of dogs, and I heard it, you know, I'm not saying anything wrong. I agree, we've got to make sure that if we do impose laws, we're able to fulfill them without overdoing things. And, but I'd like to share with you right now what I'm experiencing and my neighbors are experiencing, to keep you of your concept, the whole situation. If we don't, like you said, if we don't have something to act upon, then we can't act upon it. Right now, we just had some neighbors move into a house. They had bought the house right directly behind us, great people, really nice. Unfortunately, they have about 17 dogs, and when one dog goes off, as we know, the other dog's going to go off. Multiply that by 17. I went over here to count to the kennel over here and it sounded like the same thing. And, in calling for authorities' help, I come to find out that there isn't anything that I can do except for call and complain about the barking. I had an officer invited into my yard, that I invited in my yard, and look over the fence, he counted 17 dogs. At that time, I still wasn't sure if I could do anything, what can be done? The only thing that can be done right now, the way we have our laws in this town, is by continually calling, making complaints, tying up resource police department over dogs barking. If we're worried about spending money on ordinances that we can, that we may not be able to deal with, then we're really spending a lot of money on ordinances we don't have that we can act upon. And trust me, when you're trying to lay there in your home watching TV in the evening, and you want to have your windows open, or late at night when you want to be able to sleep, and you can't, because you've got a puppy farm in the backyard that's just going off all the time, it increases your utility bills dramatically, a lot, and it's very annoying. And I, I would really hate to think that one of these officers were called, or his, one of his officers were called out to handle a barking complaint over Oregon, because we don't have an ordinance. And then to find out one of his associates is in dire trouble, where they're handling a dog bark, because we don't have the ordinance, so please. Yes, I agree, we want to make sure we don't have too much, but we also want to make sure, like you said, we can't act on everything right now, but if we have the tool to act upon it, if we had the tool to act upon what we have right now in my backyard, I would have some peace and solitude in my own home. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on that particular issue, and I know in some of our, one of our neighboring communities, with the changing of animal control laws, it gives our animal control and police department a tool to be able to track nuisance-type animals. And, and in this one community, when X amount of calls keep coming in, then they have the ability to remove those animals from that home and tell the owners either do something about it, or they can apply for a hearing in regards to their animals to get them back or either lose them, because it's showing that they're irresponsible. I'm not saying that we're at that point yet, but, you know, that's, that's a lot of animals for someone to have in the backyard and to have a whole community disrupted, so, or at least a neighborhood disrupted. So, let me just finish. So, I could see at some point where, as things begin to evolve with our animal control department, that they can, you know, take control of a situation like that so that the neighborhood is not having that nuisance problem, because that, that is totally irresponsible to have 17 dogs barking and causing a problem like that in a neighborhood. So, I just want to make that comment because there are other communities out there that have stricter codes that will allow their officers to go in and deal with a situation like that. But we have to get to that point, and I understand, you know, the trouble that you're having with something like that. I have my own troubles with other animals, and I, you know, I have to wait until these things come about in order to rectify some of those problems.
What else from the public?
Okay, so, my name is Julia Stowers. Two years ago, I started a rescue in town. Kate's Rescue for Animals, we're up to about 950 animals so far that we've saved, a pretty good job. So, I have also started a program in town called Notched Gister Average Cat. It's a TNR program. We have some funding to help with the feral cat program. I've also had, for a while, some funding to get about 100 animals fixed for $20 each for our really low-income people. So, we've been trying to do a lot of work towards this. There's several things that I have a problem with. I love the breeder's permit, I think that's awesome, especially if the money is going to be used to help, you know, keep animals spayed and neutered. I think that's fabulous. The surrender fee I have a problem with, and I'm just going to throw out, I deal with a lot of animals that get dumped in this community, a lot. And, we get them from the fields, I can't tell you how many animals I have right now that we start on our description on our Facebook page. This animal was found in a field. So, I'm very, very concerned with surrender fees in this community, not the turlough, which I understand that we use as the model in what you've come up with. It's a different kind of community, and I think that we're going to have a lot of dumped animals. Also, if we do have a surrender fee and people are not willing to pay that, we're not going to understand the history of the animal. Often now, when the animals come in, because there's no surrender fee, we get some of the history of that animal. We know if they've been spayed or neutered, which is, you can find that out at a bit, but you get to know about their history, and that's really helpful. When you're trying to rehome the animal, that does make a difference. Those are things that I'm concerned about, the surrender fee, the restriction, I'm concerned if we do come up with a restriction, that people are going to start dumping their animals, especially aged animals, senior animals are going to get dumped so that they can have more animals in their home. I do think that that's a concern. And I'm wondering, how did we decide that having a restriction on animals actually helps with overpopulation? So, maybe I could come and meet with you sometime this coming week and talk about that, because I'd be very interested to know about that. Anyway, those are some of my concerns right now about the things that we're talking about. I love the kenneling, and I'm very concerned about, Jason is going to be really overworked. I do really understand your view about having these laws in place, and there are people that really do take advantage of some of this stuff. Also, I would like to have a conversation about my fosters and how that would work. So, anyway, thank you for your time. I really appreciate getting this opportunity to speak with you for a few minutes. The hour is ridiculous, but... The hour is ridiculous, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Peggy Logan. I'm with Second Chance Rescue for Animals. I think I started here about a year or so ago with all of these different implements of these different laws and standards. I went to Turlock and talked to them quite a bit about all of this, and really, the breeder's license is really to encourage the owner not to breed their dog. I mean, their fines are to help people to make the decision to spay and neuter their dog. That's what the whole, the whole thing behind the breeder's license is. The surrender fee, I feel, is to, for owners to take responsibility, also to keep our dogs in Los Banos getting our dogs and not getting the dogs from San Anella and from Dos Palos and Fireball and Chachilla, because they all do have a surrender's fees. Chachilla and all of the neighboring counties do have that, and I don't see any issues. I would like to go back to Turlock and talk to some more, to talk to some more about the breeder's license. I think there's a lot of things that we're not sure about, and I think the fines are what are going to try to help the owner to not breed their pets. So, I thank you for all of the work you've all done, and as a rescue, you know, you just want to see some light at this tunnel. And I hope we can implement some of this to help the volunteers at the shelter feel like they are getting somewhere, and our things are changing. We, as the Los Banos Animal Shelter, took in 200 more animals last year, and Turlock took in 50 less animals. So their program is working and ours isn't. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Mr. Mayor, what we're looking at is a top-to-bottom review of our ordinances. Yes, the ones that we're talking about now are related to pet overpopulation, but the goal of this update, we wanted to get feedback on those hot-button topics from the council, but we're going to do a top-to-bottom revamp of the animal control ordinance, and we are taking models from Turlock's. And, I mean, you named, that's just one that was mentioned, but we're looking at all kinds of cities, what they're doing, we're talking to these folks, what's working, what's not. And for you guys that were shaking your heads about what was going on, I want to hear that. You know, I go out and I can ride with Jason Martin in the truck and kind of see what's going on and get my head wrapped around those things, but we don't know if, you know, tell us, and we have an open-door policy. You make an appointment and I'll talk to you. I don't care how long it takes because I'm here to work with you and resolve these issues. If you're having an idea and it's something that we can implement into the program, I'm game.
Chief Breezy?
Last comment. There's some talk about other jurisdictions or municipalities that we're being compared to, and it's fair to shoot for the stars with some of those, but I don't think it's a fair assessment to compare us to someone like Turlock. We did a side-by-side comparison to that agency, and unfortunately for us, I don't even think that we're in the same, I don't want to say in the same league, because they just are so much larger, they've got so many more employees than we do just working on the animal control side of it. And I'm not trying to take away or say anything about our program versus theirs. We run a great program, our volunteers are amazing. I just, it's just unfortunate to me when we, when we're like an agency twice or three times our size, they're making leaps and bounds and we're not. It's just a different situation, and I think that perspective needs to be reminded sometimes because we're not Turlock. We've got one person, and we run him ragged, and we're really proud of the work that we've done with him and the volunteers and the things that we continue to do. And we will strive to be more like Turlock, we're just not there yet. So I just want everyone to make sure that they keep that in mind as we go through this process.
Okay. Have we had any time to discuss chipping of animals too, repeat offenders or, the chipping, the location? Microchip?
Hold on, hold on, let me get you on here.
I'm sorry. It's not something that we've looked in so far with this ordinance, but it is one of the things that I was looking at as part of our vicious dogs. That is something that I'd like to see written into the ordinance when you're dealing with vicious or dangerous dogs, that they be microchipped so that we can manage those and identify them quickly if they're out running at large, and we know that they're associated to a dangerous dog. But we haven't talked really about microchipping. But again, this is all part of the top-to-bottom review, and I promise you, we'll look at everything and we'll come back with a good, complete ordinance.
All right. Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Palmer McCoy, city of Los Banos. So, I'd like to echo what a few of you have said, but the issue I have with all the permits, all the fees and everything else that we're talking about today is, I'm going to do it because I want to be legal. You guys can throw out all the fees you want. I have five kids. My oldest is 21 or 22, something like that. Youngest is 14. We got our first dog the other day. I don't want animals because they are a pain in the butt and they cause problems. But the more permits, the more fees, the more everything else you guys throw out there, we're the ones that are going to do it. The problems that you guys are talking about, they're not going to go do it. They're not. And so, you can put a permit out there and have a reasonable fee or a small fee, and they're not going to do it, and when you catch them, you can still fine them, and you can make the fines exorbitant as you want to make them. But to make the fees cost more and more and more because you want to stop the overpopulation, if I read this slide right, you guys caught 500 cats, neutered or spated them, and then released them back into my neighborhood. I don't get that at all. If there were 500 dogs, we wouldn't have released them. Now, everybody hates me, but I'm not, I'm not an animal person, not. But why are we, if we're complaining about overpopulation, releasing these things back into the population, into the city, and nobody is responsible for it? He's telling me that if you release them back, if you catch them near my house and you release them back because whoever put water out, they're supposed to go get medical? Again, who's going to enforce it? I think it's ridiculous. But my concern is the fees, the permits. If you're going to do permits, you're going to do fees. Make those small, make the fines for the people who don't do it cost 15 times more than what it is.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I just wanted to thank Jason and Commander Haddon for the wonderful presentation tonight, and Jason, our animal control officer who does an extraordinary job. I think he has a clear understanding now that, you know, nobody's going to put fire underneath him and burn him to stake. So, you know, I'm really looking forward to these new animal control laws being revised in our community to help with our animal control population. And I would hope at some point, as we move down the line, not right now, that education becomes a part of it too. I'm a firm believer in education, and if it starts at the elementary school level to teach these kids about caring for their animals and spaying and neutering is important and making sure that they get their shots and seeing the vet, they're a strong advocate for taking the message back home to mom and dad who may not understand. So, all these things are for the future, they're coming, but we're at the infant stage right now. And I just ask the public to be patient with us. And again, I want to thank our police department and Commander Haddon for doing such a wonderful job and presenting this to us this evening. And I want to let you know I fully support what you presented to us this evening as well.
Okay, so where are we, council? Seem direction. That's our task. Silbera?
I mean, if I read it correctly, we kind of, I think we've given direction to kind of move forward with, you know, looking at those issues that you brought up, and I'm a big believer in if we're going to look at an ordinance, I appreciate the one side or the other, let's look at the whole thing. And if it's, you know, 60 years old and revisited 20 years ago, if we're going to look at this thing, then let's get it up to some current standards. And ultimately, there's, I actually think is, this situation here, it's a hot-button issue, it's very, people are very emotional about it. And what I think is, is when we go down this road a little bit, that it wouldn't hurt to have a workshop, like a planning session, or I don't know what, for lack of a better, like a workshop to where we can have, in maybe not such a formal setting here, to understand some of these folks' concerns and listen to our concerns and try to narrow down on some of this stuff. That's just a suggestion, but I think as far as, I feel like we've kind of, as a council, I don't know if we need that in form of a motion. It's not an action item, it's just for discussion purposes. But I feel like with the discussion that went on, that direction has kind of been given, but I don't know, maybe the city attorney could clarify that for me.
Let me listen to Mr. Freer first, then he can give direction on two people.
Silbera, there's obviously need. And to me, I don't want us to get caught up in the minutia of legality, I want us to deal with some nuts and bolts, with some stuff that can be fixed, so that we're dealing with stuff that we can actually deal with, we have the staffing to deal with, and whatever, you know, Chief Breezy mentioned, the idea of having this breeder's permit or whatever it is. If these are tools you need, I don't want us to have to get into a lot of heavy detail legality, and then there's a lot of time. Just deal with the nuts and bolts. What's the problem? And I think there's, I think the council agrees with that, that we need to deal with the problem. The 17 dogs in the backyard, that's inexcusable. If we don't have an ordinance that deals with that, we need to have, we need to have something to deal with that. So, that, and if you need a motion, all, then make that motion, that we ask staff to pursue reexamination and pursue to the animal ordinance.
Guys good with that? Mr. Lewis?
I think maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you can just get a consensus and ask each of us if we want to move forward and have staff move forward, that should do it, since it's just in discussion phase and not an agenda item for a motion. And I'll give you a yes, move forward.
Okay, so you want him to then come back to us with, based on all the discussion tonight, you want him to come back with an ordinance, are we going to continue this discussion? Or do you want, do you want staff to piece something together? I'm not sure here. Mr. Freer?
I'd like to see staff go ahead and work on it. I don't think we need to come back to council yet until they have, they put some kind of a skeleton.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. That was what my motion was.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yeah, I think Commander Haddon had already indicated that they're going to do a top-to-bottom, and these were just the hot points that were concerns. So, I, you know, think that we need to just give them direction to move forward with revamping our animal control ordinance.
Everybody good with that? All right. Jason, is it clear enough for you?
Hey, thank you for bearing with me, I appreciate it. It's my first big one.
Scott's got something to say here.
All right. All right, Scott.
Very good job on the presentation, and so you'll have that ready for our next council meeting, right? I'm just, great job tonight. Thank you.
Okay, audience, we will let you know way ahead of time when this comes back to us, and please look at the agendas, so if you'd like to come back and, again, make comments at that time based on what you felt you needed to say tonight, if you need to say any more, we will, we will continue this, okay? All right, thank you. See. Well, we're close to having a meeting go into tomorrow. All right. I can't remember the last time we were here at 11:30.
I think our record was 11:30.
Yeah. All right, let's go to, let's not try and beat that. Okay, let's go on to item 11, advisement of public notices. And Stacy, are both of you still awake?
He is.
Okay, all right.
Party animal. Okay, so four public hearing notices. The first two are, just went through the design review process, that was for Sleep Train, which would be in the Stone Creek Plaza, just north of the Starbucks right there. It'll be a buildup, so new construction of a 4,000-square-foot retail mattress store. The second is an expansion for Mean Barrio. And then I do have two vesting tentative tract maps and a final, and both of them have final development plans that will be coming before the planning commission. They were originally named Villa Barano, which is now North Point, and then The Provinces, which is now going to be South Point. The Provinces had originally a tentative map that did expire recently, the development agreement expired after 10 years. So, they are going to be revising that and sending that in. That public hearing will be on Wednesday, September 23rd at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
All right, very good. Okay, now we're looking to Mr. Carrigan, let's see. City managers' report.
I just have one item. Had a very interesting meeting today, it was for about 90 minutes. It was in Merced today with all the city managers, the police chiefs, the district attorney, Caltrans, and we talked about homelessness. And I don't think that meeting had ever happened in the history of Merced County. It was a very productive meeting, and we actually agreed to meet again. So, just wanted to let you know that there's a lot of horsepower in that room today, and it was interesting and productive, and I'm really looking forward to the next time we get together. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. I just want to remind the public to be mindful of various announcements for events that are going to be happening in our community over the next week and months to come. And for the September 12th celebration for our fire department's 125th anniversary and the movie night, it was a great event, and I think the public who came really enjoyed themselves, and it was nice not to have wind, to have our screen blowing all over the place, so that turned out really well. Also, this past Saturday, the Los Banos Arts Council quilters honored and saluted veterans of Los Banos who served our country by presenting them beautiful quilts that were made specifically for them. It's a real pleasure and an honor to attend that event each year, and the quilters do an absolutely wonderful job in making this presentation. Stacy, congratulations to you and your staff for the CDBG grant application and bringing that money to Los Banos. Well-deserved. We were just kind of holding our breath because many times we've applied for those grants and not received the funds, so it was our time this year. And also, we received some additional funds for neutering and spaying animals, and that was a really great surprise as well for me. This past Monday, I had the opportunity to, to visit and tour the Golden Valley Health Centers here in Los Banos. The chief executive officer, Tony Weber, and his staff invited me to come and visit their facilities. And the one that's on Texas Street, it covers just about every examination. They have pediatrics, they have podiatry. Once every other Saturday, they have behavioral health, which is family therapy and counseling, as well as their medical staff. They have about 15 to 17 staff and serve roughly on the average of 80 patients a day at that facility. It's a lot of, lot of people. They're in the state of remodeling, and it's just a wonderful organization to have here. They're located not just in Merced, but in Stanislaus County, and they take insurances of all types, and they also work with the community on a sliding scale fee if you don't have health insurance. The dental office I also visited across the street, and they have three providers on staff. And, you know, there was an air about that place when I walked in there that made me feel very, very comfortable. And you don't often feel that when you walk into a dentist's office. It's usually a tense situation, not maybe necessarily because of the staff, but just for the mere fact that you're in a dentist's office. But I didn't get that sense when I walked into that dental facility. It was very calming and reassuring. The staff were very pleasant. Two of the doctors were on vacation, but the one that was there, just a, you know, personality is sweet. the one that was there, just a, you know, personality, a sweet man on approach. They have nine dental rooms that they serve patients. They have a total of about fifteen to seventeen staff, and on the average, they serve seventy-five patients a day, and that's a lot of people. They do outreach to the community, mostly in the Head Start community, and they also take all forms of insurance, and they do a sliding scale. One of the things that they shared with me is that this year, our state legislators passed a new law that every child has to have a dental examination at least once a year, and I'm sure that the school districts are going to be, make sure that these children are having their examinations before the school year starts, and so that's, that's something that they're trying to work with in the community to help notify families that their children do have to come in for dental examinations. And their goal is, is to prevent people from having situations where they end up in the emergency room with serious medical problems as a result of their teeth, as well as educating young mothers on how to take care of their children in regards to dental from the day of birth. So, I was really happy to be able to be invited to have that tour and thankful that we have an organization within the city of Los Banos that provides such a wide array of services to our community. And that's my report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Silbera.
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. I don't have a lot for tonight either, except that I attended the fire department's event on Saturday and it was a really wonderful event. I want to thank everyone that had a part in putting that on for the community. Thank you.
Mr. Freyer? Not too much. Friday nights, Los Banos-Dos Palos game. Old rivalry, old tradition. So, if you can get out there and support the local ballplayers, they sure appreciate it. This weekend, you got Street Fair, and then October, first weekend of October, you got Tomato Fest. So, lots to do in Los Banos. Have a great couple of weeks.
Thank you. Congratulations to the fire department, one-twenty-five. We'll be celebrating that again on October seventh and reissuing the proclamation. Tim, you're going to bring a video. And then fall cleanup, don't forget that, Saturday, September twenty-sixth, seven a.m. to two p.m. at, where is it? At the fairgrounds, yes. The fairgrounds parking lot. And very quickly, this large vag was brought back by a person who visited Grementanova, Italy, and we are an official sister city of Grementanova, Italy, and there are a number of books here and plates and other things, and I'm going to, other things, and I'm going to present those to the city manager. They're now in your entrusted care, and you can display these, do whatever you want, and these are all gifts from Grementanova, our sister city, and from the mayor of Grementanova. Okay, and with that, if, does anyone else have anything else to say? Speak now, or we can leave. Okay, and I'll adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-eight.